I believe we are ready to begin our meeting. If we could start the introductory video. I'd like to call the November 17th, 2020 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Belcher to lead the invocation for this meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. Y'all would bow with me and be happy to open us up in prayer this evening. Father, I do thank you for the opportunity to pray in our country and our county. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve and the opportunity to be able to be with this commission. I ask your blessings upon our country, upon our state, upon our county, upon the leaders that make difficult decisions. I ask you to put a hedge about their families. I ask you to protect them. I ask you to undergird them with your wisdom as they make decisions. I thank you for these men and women that are to my left and to my right. It has been my honor to serve with them. I ask you to strengthen them in mind and strengthen them in body. I ask you to bless those that are newly elected that come in to serve. I ask you to instill in them that they serve out of compassion and not control. And I just ask you to give us a heart of service as each of us do that, that you've called us to do. Bless the business of the evening. And as we leave, keep us safe and under your provision. And I ask these things in Christ's name and grateful for the opportunity. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I have a couple of announcements to make. First, parking validation and bus passes are available for any members of the public who are attending these meetings. If you'd like to have your parking or transit pass validated, please just see one of the officers on your way out. It's valid for today only. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. We come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the exception that we are going to, we've got several recognitions we want to, we're going to do this evening, and we will do them in this order. Recognition of service to the community for Mike Plemons, recognition of service to the community for Gene Bell, recognition of service to Buncombe County Commissioner Anthony Penland, and recognition of service to Buncombe County Commissioner Joe Belcher. And following that, we will also have an adoption awareness proclamation, which Commissioner Belcher will present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published and in that order?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now go to public comment. I believe we have just a couple of members of the public who are going to comment now during public comment. We've got two public hearings later this evening where we expect to have significantly more folks who will comment during the public hearings for those matters. But at this time, I'll ask Max to help us out to hear from the folks who have signed up for this part of the public comment period. And we will just be, folks will be calling in for this.
Kylie, you may begin your public comment.
Hey, my name is Kylie Cross, and I live at 45 Captain's Drive in Candler. We are actually annexed into the city of Asheville, which has been confusing in and of itself. I speak for the residents of my street, Captain's Drive, Grove Gardens, Sand Hill School Road, Kirby Road, Anka Hills. And the noise frequency coming from the Jacob Home Plant over the past few years has been a pretty life-altering experience. It's gotten exponentially worse since June of this year with regards to readings of like 72 dBs at 2:00 in the morning in my bedroom. And this happens all, it'll happen for weeks on end. And the latest noise that they've had coming from it is a wall, wall, wall that comes from the earth to the point when you just lay your head down on your pillow, that's what you hear. And this is accompanied by the usual noise that sounds like a jet engine with a broken bearing that sits outside of your house. The lack of sleep has gotten to the point of conversations that we now understand what sleep deprivation and noise torture can accomplish. I've been in respectable contact with the current plant manager, Timothy Love, for a few months now. Current plant manager has been claiming to be mitigating the issue out of her own good graces, which is great. Fixed date was set for November 3rd, but it's not changed. It's only worse, especially now that the leaves have fallen. The county noise ordinance does not include the Anka Industrial Park. We have a huge concern surrounding the current noise exemption for the industrial park. The noise frequency we are already dealing with, and now there is the Hackon Plant that's going to be built next to Jacob Homes. Huge concern there as the noise coming from the Jacob Home Plant has already done exceptional damage to our quality of life and the resale value of our homes. Please take into consideration the 200-plus residents that didn't choose this and are now victims in a sense. The air intakes were once pointed at Belmar Lake. Their lawyers over there got them reversed towards us. All the Jacob Home Plant did at that point was reverse the direction of the noise. And we've kind of deemed it the noise beast, or it's been known as the Candler Banshee. So please take into consideration the Buncombe County Noise Ordinance exemption number four to include commercial or industrial enterprise. I'm at a point, the leaves falling, and it leaves me feeling like my only option is to put a force sale fund in my home and get a really good lawyer. Because I wouldn't want somebody else moving into this house and having to deal with this. I'd get sued. I'm available for further consultation and comments on this, and am adamant about helping get this noise ordinance put into place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hang on one second. You're good to go, Don.
Okay, I can still hear her talking, but I'm clear, okay? This is LA. This is Don Yelton, and I'm out of the North Buncombe area. And I looked at the agenda and saw all the items on it, and I see this about transportation. And I've been asking for, and I would like to see, an account for transportation and each route, and how many people ride those routes, even though this money is given to a nonprofit that does it and operates the system. But I want to take my hat off to Don and his crew and the Finance Department. And Admiral, I hope you've had something to do with this, because I love to see that dashboard, and I love to be able to go to that dashboard and go down and see what each library costs. Now, I think that's important, because that helps you keep track of federal money, which is one of the reasons, in one degree, is where he's at. So commissioners, I want to know how many of you are looking at that dashboard individually, one-on-one? Because some of you got a financial background, and you can monitor what's going on with your money and how it goes and where it goes. And that's, you've done a great job so far on that, and let's just go, let a good job stop. Keep going, and I'd like to see the same for buses and also affordable housing. One quick comment. I think it was great to hear Joe Belcher have a prayer, because I remember times when I could go up there and not have to do this little TV screen, and you'd have Jewish rabbis, you'd have Episcopal priests, you'd have Catholic priests, you'd have Baptists, Methodists, each one doing their prayer in their belief. And hell, I'm surprised that you don't appreciate that. That's all I've got to say. I did have the public comment, I was going to make one of the hearings, but I'll cut it out and let it go. Thank you for the opportunity to say it, but it'd sure be better to be able to say it in the room with you, and I'd even put my mask on for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe that concludes the comments that we have. Mr. Joyner, does that conclude them?
I will defer to Max. I think they said they were, that's it.
That's it, okay, great. All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, we've got several important folks that we want to recognize this evening. And the first is Mr. Mike Plemons. And Mr. Plemons, thank you for being with us this evening. I'm going to come over to the podium, and I'd ask you to join me nearby there. All right, I'd like to read a proclamation. That is, it's already been signed by all seven of the county commissioners. I'll ask for a motion to approve it at the conclusion of it. Whereas, the Council of Independent Business Owners was founded in 1987 by a group of local business owners who envisioned an organization that would educate business owners about the way local government works and its effect on business, provide a conduit for the flow of information between business and government, work to make Asheville and Buncombe County a better place to do business, and encourage business owners to serve on boards and commissions and to participate in the democratic process. Whereas, Mike Plemons began work with the Council of Independent Business Owners shortly after its founding, more than 30 years ago, and has served as its executive director. Whereas, Mike Plemons has worked closely with county staff, elected officials, local businesses, and interested members of the public over many years to help shape public policies that directly affect the community and economy throughout Buncombe County, and to ensure that the concerns of independently owned businesses are considered in the decision-making process. Whereas, the Council of Independent Business Owners, with the support of Mike Plemons, has hosted literally hundreds of community forums over the years to bring together elected officials, public staff, and community leaders to discuss important issues facing Buncombe County. Whereas, Mike Plemons has helped to create and sustain Buncombe County's thriving small business community. Whereas, Mike Plemons is retiring from his service at the Council of Independent Business Owners, but continues his service as Director at First Step Farm of Western North Carolina, a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving adults who are seeking to help address substance dependency. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Commission wishes to thank Mike Plemons for his many years of service and continuing service to the people of Buncombe County and Western North Carolina. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, good to see you. Thanks for being here. You're welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I'm overwhelmed with this. You know, 32 years ago, when I started out, Kurt Radcliffe was not only the county manager, he was also chairman of the county commission.
Sure was.
And then not long after that, it was Dr. Jean Rainey. So I've gotten to work with some really good people, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike always encourages me to do everything I can to keep our meetings efficient, and his comments were just perfect for that. So, thank you. All right. Our next recognition of service to the community is for Mr. Gene Bell. And I'd like to ask Senator Chuck Edwards to come forward, log with Mr. Bell. Senator Edwards, thank you for being with us this evening. It was great to see you at the chamber legislative event earlier today, and it's great to see you again.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Gene, we had a little something planned for you several months ago, and this issue came up called COVID. And we weren't able to get together at the time we had planned, but I'm really pleased that we can be here now. And I'm particularly honored that Commissioner Presley asked me to come and be a part on behalf of the entire commission to recognize you for your service. For those of you who don't know, Gene, he has, he's celebrated 25 years of service to the community, and he's got quite a resume of things that he's accomplished here. I'm just going to touch on some of those. He served as the Director of Maintenance and Construction for the county. He served as the Chief Executive Officer of the Asheville Housing Authority, the Executive Director of the Brevard Housing Authority. He served on the Asheville City School Board for eight years, and he served as the chairman there for six years. He served on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Housing Authority Risk and Retention Pool, the Board of Directors for Asheville-Buncombe County Technical Community College, and he serves as the Buncombe County, on the Buncombe County Planning Board as the chairman. And what I've learned about Gene in talking with folks that know him, it's not just the service that he's provided to the community, but it's the manner in which you've done it. I've talked to a number of folks that know you well, and they applaud the manner in which you've approached your job. And you've not looked at it as a job. You've looked at it truly, truly as a service to the community. They, I understand you had a very healthy, positive attitude. You've never had a bad day. You've got a great sense of humor. Folks have an incredible degree of respect for you, and I just have to applaud and admire you while I have not been able to be the beneficiary of knowing you through such a stellar career. I'm extremely honored here to be able to help recognize such a stellar career. And what I have for you here is a flag, a North Carolina state flag, that's been flown over the state Capitol specifically in your name and in your honor, and a certificate of authenticity from our very own Governor Roy Cooper for your service. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. It's obviously an honor. When I came here 25 years ago, the guy there, we're neighbors, and we had a long conversation about being active in the community. And he said, if you're going to be here, you need to do something. I had no idea it was going to be this much, but it's been a pleasure. I love this community. I lived six other places before I moved here and made a decision that this was going to be it. So I thank each of you for working with me. And Mike Plemons and I have worked together, and it's just been a great collaboration with a great group of people in a great county. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we would like to recognize Commissioner Anthony Penland for his service on the Buncombe County Commission. And to get us started on this, I'd like to ask a good friend of Buncombe County, Jerry Vehan, who is with us, to come forward and to share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do first is recognize the four individuals, the four citizens that you've honored today in this. I know all four of them personally and spent a lot of time. I know, and particularly as commissioners, you all serve as part-time commissioners, so I know it doesn't take any time much. Anyway, I appreciate what you're doing and what you've done. With Anthony, we go back quite a ways. Worked with him a lot as fire chiefs, one-on-one fire department. Anthony's been very active with the Buncombe County Firefighters Association, with the Western North Carolina Firefighters Association, and also on the state level, serving as a state president. One thing that I know is near and dear to him for several years, some of you are aware, we've tried to get firefighters on the state retirement system. Never could get anywhere because of a little organization known as the Internal Revenue Service. Anthony told me today that there's a bill that's working its way through Congress and probably will be passed sometime in 2021. So that's a big thing. And Anthony, you worked long and hard for that. Anyway, Anthony is somebody who's well-respected in his community. He's well-respected amongst the firefighters in Buncombe County. He's well-respected among his church community. And I really appreciate him stepping up to the plate and serving as commissioner. And Anthony, I hope we haven't heard the last from you. After you've had a little bit of rest, I hope you'll get back in the middle of things. So with that, congratulations.
I just wanted to say, it's been an honor to serve this county as a commissioner. I appreciate the, my colleagues and the friendships that we share, and to the staff, it was really good getting to know you. And just keep doing what you're doing, and just make sure that we keep the citizens of this county first. So thank you so much for everything. Thank you.
I'd like to read a proclamation from the county commission honoring Commissioner Anthony Whereas, Anthony Penland has served as a Buncombe County Commissioner from February 2020 to the present, and whereas Anthony Penland split time working as a dedicated public safety servant while also serving as a county commissioner representing District 2. And whereas Anthony Penland advocated for safety and security, feeding the hungry, addressing affordable housing, and creating job opportunities. And whereas Anthony Penland provided valuable insights to the Board of Commissioners with his firsthand knowledge of public safety. And whereas Anthony Penland selflessly dedicated himself to making Buncombe County, and specifically District 2, a better place to live, work, and visit. Now therefore, let us honor and thank Anthony Penland for his time, energy, knowledge, and abilities in serving our community. I'd like to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. It is approved. And I'd also, Commissioner Penland, like to present you with a token of our appreciation from the county commission, a small plaque in appreciation for your outstanding leadership and guidance as Buncombe County Commissioner. So I'm going to present this to you. Okay. Next, we want to recognize our friend and fellow county commissioner, Joe Belcher. And to get us started on this, I'd like to again invite Commissioner Chuck Edwards to come forward to just share a few words about Commissioner Joe Belcher.
Well, thank you. Yes, I'm Senator Chuck Edwards, and I'm honored to be here to say a few words about Commissioner Belcher. I met Joe for the first time about five years ago, and I could tell immediately that he was a very unique individual. We've worked closely together. I've counted on, I've depended on his counsel over the last five years. And some of the things that I've noticed about him is, he, number one, he is absolutely convicted to his faith and his family. The second thing that I've really noticed about Joe is he has a strong conviction for the people of Buncombe County. And I've always admired how he stayed above the fray of politics and really listened to the people and what they had to say, and had their best interest in heart with, at heart with absolutely everything that he did. I could tell that from the comments that he made to me, the questions that he asked of me, the feedback that he gave me as he would be out and about talking with folks in the community. He'd tell me about conversations that he'd have in the grocery store, where he would meet constituents, not planned, but going down the aisle, he described to me that he's met people in the grocery store who shared concerns, both on the state level and on the county level. And I've always just had a high degree of respect for how he cared about the people of Buncombe County, and that care came through in the actions in this very room. I also have to applaud him for his efforts. I say him, he's right there, Joe. I'll just talk, I'll just talk to you directly. In supporting the tourism industry in Buncombe County, that often takes a great deal of courage with the environment that we have here, and how instrumental you were in the development of what turned out to be the Buncombe County Jobs Recovery Act, in helping so many small businesses get back on its feet. I have the utmost, utmost respect for the job that you've done, and consider you a friend of myself and of the people of Buncombe County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Commissioner Belcher, I'd like to read this proclamation now. County of Buncombe proclamation honoring Commissioner Joe Belcher. Whereas Joe Belcher has served as a Buncombe County Commissioner from 2012 to the present, and whereas Joe Belcher has eight years of service as a Buncombe County Commissioner representing District 3. Whereas Joe Belcher has spent two terms dedicated to enhancing the lives of the citizens of Buncombe County. And whereas Joe Belcher tirelessly advocated for education, infrastructure, and economic development. And whereas Joe Belcher selflessly served on multiple committees, boards, and the Tourism Development Authority. And whereas Joe Belcher facilitated countless projects for Buncombe County, including a new roof at the Asheville High School, playgrounds at intermediate schools, the Anka Sports Complex, and more. Now therefore, let us honor and thank Joe Belcher for his time, energy, knowledge, and abilities in serving our community. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner Belcher, I'd like to share this with you, as well as a gift from the county recognizing your service in years of dedication to the people of Buncombe County.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Let me just thank you for four years that I've been with you and what you've done, Anthony yourself too. You know, I remember four, a little over four years ago, me and Joe got to You know, I remember a little over four years ago, me and Joe got together representing District Three. And I'll never forget, he said, "Robert, hang on, we're going for a ride the next four years." Well, four years is over, and he just told me the other day, "Robert, we're going to land, and it's time for you to take over." And he said, "I'm always going to be a part of this." And that's one thing Joe's already thinking about, how he is going to take care of this county without being a commissioner. And you're a good friend. I mean, our family loves each other, and we've done a lot of things, and you're going to be really missed. But on behalf of the commissioners here, we come up with a little token and give you a little time to get out on the green and play a little bit there. So, from us commissioners to you, Joe, we're going to miss you.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you. Point of personal privilege, Chairman?
Certainly.
So, I've done pretty good tonight, kind of holding it together. You know, if you, most people know me, that I'm a pretty caring guy. However, I'm really ugly when I cry, so I'm not going to try not to do that. It has been my honor to serve from this position. You know, I think about using the term "serving the county." I mean, you know, it's what you're doing. You know, the Second Commandment's to love your neighbor as yourself. And so, all I did was be able to extend that in a different seat. And, you know, we can all learn from that, you know, by just esteem in each other a little bit better than ourselves. But it's been my honor for eight years, the consistent, I mean, I've been with the chairman for eight years, and we've been through multiple boards, just all kinds of different folks. And, you know, I've tried to be a friend to each one of them. And you can do that and still make the right decisions for the county. You know, I feel like I've served with a purpose. Purpose is a term that requires some discretion, but also requires direction. And I feel like I've done that. You know, I've thought on some of the things that we've been able to accomplish together because if you go to the student of government, one of the things that the first things they teach you is that you do not operate on your own. So, there's nothing that I've been able to do by myself. I've had to have the support of the board. And so, I thank y'all for that because I feel like our partnership has been good for the county. And I still love this county. I still love the people in this county. I still intend to be a positive example for my family and my grandchildren. And by doing that, I hope to be able to serve, you know, in other capacities. You know, God knows what that'll be. And I'm excited about it, and I'm not disappointed. I do not leave this board that way. I think that Mike Plemons probably said earlier to someone, "How long you think we're going to be here tonight?", which is typically the curse on tonight. So, we're probably going to be here for a long, long meeting, and I'm okay with that. But I thank y'all for your kind words and the opportunity to be able to serve. It's been a blessing. My family's watching from home, those that are the reasons that I serve and transfer that love of my family to the county. And it's been a joy for me to be able to do that, and I thank you for it. And I'm done.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, I get to do a proclamation, right?
Yes, sir. All right. Next up is adoption awareness proclamation, and Commissioner Joe Belcher will present this item.
Okay, so I get the opportunity to be able to do the proclamation for adoption. I asked the chairman, some of you know this and some of you don't, but I have two grandsons, and one of my grandsons, AJ, is adopted and a joy, joy in my life. And so, it is with honor and dedication to him that I read this tonight. The County of Buncombe proclamation of November is Adoption Awareness Month. Whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home, and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas in Buncombe County, there are 298 children and 26 young adults aged 18 to 21 in custody in Buncombe County. Whereas 72 children achieved permanency with their forever families through adoption, July of the 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Health and Human Services will continue to focus on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children, as well as those who work to address the impacts of childhood trauma through safe and stable forever homes that meet the unique needs of children in foster care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the county, by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. At the month of November 2020, be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County. For two, that all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on their need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. Three, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Adopted this the 17th day of November 2020, Board of Commissioners, County of Buncombe, signed by Chairman Browning Newman. And we want a motion to do this?
Sure.
So, move that...
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. It's approved.
Commissioners and members of the public, thank you for recognizing adoption tonight, both personally and professionally. Adoption holds a very sacred place in my heart, and I just want to put the challenge out there and just kind of bring to the forefront the issue, not just in Buncombe County, but nationally. Over 122,000 children are currently free for adoption in the United States and are in the foster care system. And without people who will step up and open their hearts and homes to these children, many of these children will age out of the foster care system with no family. And we talk a lot about homelessness, and we're very pleased at HHS to be the county's liaison to homelessness services and to homeless providers in our community. But if you stop and think about it a minute, an equally challenging situation is to be familyless. And that's what happens to some of these kids. They're 18 years old, they've moved a lot, they've suffered incredible trauma. And to leave the foster care system without a family is extremely challenging. So, the good news is 72 adoptions last year. I've been in public human services since 1987, and I'm telling you, 72 adoptions in one county is almost unheard of. And I'd like to just recognize the staff that make this happen. Obviously, in a COVID world, I can't bring them with me. I'd love to have them in here, but we have an adoption team that is incredible. And I'd just like to recognize them publicly. Susan Garland is the team leader. She's been working in adoption for many years, and she really knows what she's doing. Her team is Liz Har, Mary Jones, Jessica Justus Swart, and Sheri Nordland. And then the last thing I'd like to say is simply that of the 298 children that we still have in custody, 32 of those children are legally free for adoption, and 21 of them do not have an adoptive placement. So, if you're listening tonight, and maybe you're listening at home, and you have an extra place at your table and a whole lot of extra love that you can invest, then we would welcome citizens to call us and talk to us about possibly fostering and/or adopting these children. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Stoney. Appreciate your words. All right, commissioners, we now move to, we have several public hearings. The first is the Esposito rezoning request, and Nathan Pennington, our planning director, will present this item.
Thank you, Chair, commissioners, members of the public. Max, if you'll start the presentation. Thank you. I'm going to work between the staff report today, and I've got a few slides to help us along. Also, in the spirit of trying to make the consistency statement a little more user-friendly, I'm going to work with you today on that. We're going to do it together in the form of a worksheet, and I'll be right here with you to help along. So, I do want to say also that the applicant...
Stick your nose in it, Max. Got to think through the years.
You know, it's the spirit of working together. So, the applicant does have a legal representation. Mr. Attorney Oost will be making that presentation after the conclusion of mine. This is the Esposito MAP Amendment. The hearing was properly noticed in the Asheville Citizen Times, as well as posted, and our typical 1,000-foot mailings went out, and the property was posted as noted. Application information specifically, this is three parcels, consists of 8.72 acres. The applicant is Brett Turner, represented by Attorney Oost, and the owner is Mike Esposito of Freeze Enterprise LLC. And the properties, I'm going to go up here and then go back, you'll notice the property on the left-hand side in yellow is just to the south of the river. And it is 40, 55, and 58 Parkway Lane in Arden, North Carolina. This is a view of the property, the access point from Clayton Road. You have to get to the property via a private access through the Asheville Firefighters property. This is a private drive and easement through that property to the subject's site. The property currently has some RVs, short-term rentals, and recreation opportunities. We'll discuss that a little further here in the presentation. I do want you to note, as you get further into the property, you will see some of the trickiness of the access point, and you'll see that it is fairly narrow. It's 11.5 feet in width. It is paved, but you'll notice some topographical challenges on each side. Back to the specific zoning slide, it is currently zoned R1. It sits to the north of an established residential neighborhood. The current zoning is R1 residential. The proposed zoning is public service. The Asheville Firefighters property is there to the left. It would be a continuation of that zoning district. I'm going to get into some of the specifics now, and I'm going to advance a couple of slides to help out with this part of it. I'm going to read along with the staff report. I'm going to start on page four, and I'm going to walk you through this aerial representation of the subject property. The established subdivision that I was speaking of is the Rivercrest subdivision. To the south of that subdivision, you will see Clayton Road. The property access meanders up from Clayton Road and follows along the backside of the subdivision. The subject property, three parcels inclusive, is indicated with the red arrow there on the French Broad River. These properties were part of the Asheville's former extraterritorial jurisdiction. The reason that is important, we'll discuss that slightly later. Over the years, and historically, this property was a functioning manufactured home park. However, it has transitioned and contains a mix of park model RVs. Those are the ones that look like the smaller cabins. They are on wheels, and they are recreational vehicles. That is a distinction. They are not manufactured homes. It includes accessory structures and other site-built structures. A request to rezone this property from R1 to R3 in 2013 was denied by the Board of Commissioners largely due to concerns related to spot zoning. That particular concern is not necessarily applicable tonight because this is a request to go to public service. The next-door property is also zoned public service. So, that sort of dissolves that spot zoning concern. We've talked about the access before. This is important because the access and the rights contained there within, within that private easement, go through the Asheville Firefighters property. It is an ingress and ingress arrangement. We'll talk in just a second about why that's important as it relates to the provision of public water. The property can be served by public sewer, and an allocation has been obtained from the Metropolitan Sewage District. It's not included on this map, but in the grassy area around the area where the red arrow is, there is a public sewer line that runs through the property. Some provision for water is currently supplied to the site via a well or system of wells. So, that's how they currently get water to the site. There's a public water line out on Clayton Road. The applicant has engaged a professional engineer to explore the possibility of expanding this system. If water is derived from well or wells to accommodate future development, the potential for intensive commercial development on-site will be limited. So, the applicant, and they will probably speak to this, has looked at the possibility of talking with the adjacent property owner about making that easement available for public water to get from Clayton Road to the subject property. Okay. Now, let's look at the context of the neighborhood. Across the street from the Rivercrest subdivision is the Snow Creek landscaping. That's a, you know, you can go there, get mulch, different things like that, nursery plants. To the south, and not on this picture, is a Duke substation. There is a smaller subdivision under construction, that's the Weatherwood subdivision. And Biltmore Baptist is there to the east, the large building to the east. In the area too are a couple of large apartment complexes, Aventine, Roberts Lake. So, it's sort of a mixed bag in this area in terms of different uses that are occurring. I'm going to move on to a little bit of a zoomed-in image, and I want you to pay particular interest to the green area that's served over the years. You'll notice some smaller areas where they play cornhole and various different recreation activities. There are some structures in this area, particularly along the river. I want you to look at those as they're going to be important in just a moment as I advance through the slides. Flood plain. So, there's a significant amount of flood plain on the property, particularly that first bold line, the one that's closest to the river. Anything north of that bold blue line represents the floodway. That's the area that typically, without significant engineering studies, is off limits to development. However, to the south of that first bold line and to the next bold blue line is the 100-year or the fringe. There can be development in that area, but you need to take into consideration that you would either have to bring in fill or elevate structures in order to meet the county's standards, which are a two-foot freeboard above base flood elevation. Other than that, you'll look to the south, and you'll see the other two parcels that are part of the rezoning request. And you'll see at the 1875 parcel, that's a structure that's been there for some time, and there's some other scattered accessory structures, including a smaller log cabin within this area. So, the reason earlier that we talked about the extraterritorial jurisdiction is that the city of Asheville had flood permitting authority until 2013, when the extraterritorial jurisdiction was abolished. Until we received the application for the rezoning, staff had never had an opportunity to fully investigate the site. However, our commitment is always to visit all the sites that we bring before you in terms of a rezoning application. We went to the site and discovered that the two structures in the floodway were placed there, and we could not find any evidence that they were ever permitted. And at that time, they had permitting authority with the city of Asheville. We checked with the city of Asheville, could not find any applications that have been submitted. There are park model RVs that have taken on permanent characteristics, meaning they've had utilities, decks, and other appurtenances added to them over the years. That's in violation of the Flood Damage and Prevention Ordinance. And also, there is Office of the State Fire Marshal Guidance that says that park model RVs are not to be meant for permanent... be meant for permanent habitation. You can bring them in, you can bring them out, just like you would an RV.
Yeah, but you can't.
You find them at KOAs, places like that, but it's an important distinction. And these have appeared sometime between 2000 and 2002 based on available aerial imagery. So, what does this all mean? Site development is probably, has limited potential due to the restricted access and the provision of well water on the site. It is possible, and I think you'll hear from the applicant that they, and while we cannot consider a specific development plan, they may at least provide some inkling as to what they have in store for the future or what they would like to maybe propose after the rezoning application is considered. So, while specific development plans cannot be considered as part of a zoning map amendment, future development of the site will likely trigger a review by the Board of Adjustment through the conditional use permit process. The reason that's important, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request that's submitted. However, staff will work with the applicant to ensure compliance with flood standards independent of the zoning map amendment process. And the reason why, pursuant to North Carolina case law, individualized particular conditions on rezonings to a general use district are generally unenforceable, meaning we can't tie specific conditions to a rezoning request. So, we will work with the applicant, the current owner, to address the outstanding violations on the site. And, as part of a conditional use permit process, if this rezoning is approved, we absolutely will be looking to mitigate those outstanding violations as part of a conditional use permit process. The Planning Board unanimously denied this request on November the 2nd, 2020 at their regularly scheduled hearing. And I will note that if this application is denied tonight, the zoning ordinance does have a provision that says there's a one-year waiting period before submitting a new MAP amendment. That being said, that concludes my presentation. Mr. Oost has a presentation. And then, if you don't have any questions for me, or do, I'm happy to answer them and then I'll be up here to help you with the consistency statement worksheet.
Should Mr. Oost make his presentation during the public hearing?
I think that's probably appropriate.
Okay. Why don't we hold...
If I'm counseled otherwise.
Is that okay? Or could it be done either way? I think we've done it different ways in the past, but if it's part of the testimony, should it be during the hearing? All right, we'll plan on doing that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pennington at this time? All right, thank you. All right, well, why don't we go ahead and we'll call a public hearing and I'll invite Mr. Oost to get us started. While he's coming up, are there any other, Mr. Turner, are there any other folks who have signed up for the public hearing on this item?
According to the sheet, there is not any other public hearing coming.
All right. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. And I have a PowerPoint that I like to get started with and I'm not sure how to advance the slides on this. Is this...
You're not alone. It's, uh, it's, uh, Vex's, many of Duncan County's residents who...
Okay. And I rehearsed this last night. It should take about three minutes, but I'm trying to breathe through this mask and talk at the same time, so it may be a little slower. I beg your indulgence on that. Good evening Commissioners. Thank you for considering this rezoning request. As Mr. Pennington said, my name is Bob Oost. I'm with the law firm of McGuire Wood and Bissett here in town. I'd like to thank staff for their thorough analysis and a good presentation. I'm gonna talk to you for a few minutes and with me here is Brett Turner, who is the applicant. He doesn't own the property, he's got an interest in it and so, but he may talk to you a little bit about his interactions with the neighbors. The, as Mr. Pennington indicated, the current use is Asheville River cabins. It's basically eight separate units that are arrayed around a central field. It's used to be a mobile home park. Those are, those mobile homes are long gone. Here are some photographs of the property and if you've never been there, and I've lived in Duncan County a long time, I'd never been there and it's kind of, you go over the hill to get, to get back in there. It's a really beautiful piece of property. You can see why Mr. Turner's interested in it, but, but the units that you see here are representative, representative of the units that are in the park. It, it's, the characteristics, characteristics of the property are that it slopes steeply downhill from south to north and, and about 1,000 feet of river frontage and there's a large flat area right next to the river. As Mr. Pennington also said, the, both the zoning and the uses in that area are kind of a real mixed bag. You've got the landscaping business right across the street. There's a manufacturing facility up towards the Aventine Apartments, a few, a few major multifamily establishments. Here's some more photos of the property. You can sort of get an idea of how steeply it slopes up once you leave this flat area next to the river. And again, here's the, here's the zoning for the area. You've got a combination of employment, which is the light blue, public services, which is the lavender color, and I've got an arrow pointed towards the property there. And, and so, it's, it's a, there's a mixture of zoning and land uses. What the applicant wishes to do, and, and we know that if it's rezoned for, to PS, they can do anything that PS allows, but what the applicant wants to do is basically to continue and improve and expand a little bit the, the uses that are there now. But the current zoning of R1 does not allow that and the PS zoning is needed in order to, in order to, to, to allow this proposed use. The, as we've, as we've talked about with some of you, the county code does not have conditional zoning or other, some other mechanism by which these plans can be locked in. But for many reasons, you know, the topography of the property, it's accessibility, the limited, limited water availability, the property is really not suitable for a lot of the uses that are available under PS zoning. It turns out, the vacation rental cabins is kind of a perfect fit and, and the owner, the owner has been working with the adjacent residents to address their concerns about it. He can tell you about that. Those discussions have gone very well. This is obviously not in the mountains, but it's, it's an idea of what Mr. Turner would propose to do with the property, should he, should it get rezoned and should we get the, the site-specific approval that, that would be required. It's not a hotel. It's not like a hotel. It's more like the old-fashioned tourist accommodations, a motor court with, with separate individual cabins. Perfect for this socially-distanced time. Here is, the, the property right now is not landscaped very much along the river. This is just some concepts of what Mr. Turner would propose to do with it, just really to improve and enhance the, the area around there with trails and, and perhaps some better landscaping up along the river. There's some more examples of the improvements that could go there, not, not that would go there. The public service district is, is supposed to have access to, to public water and sewer or available, or have provision for an internal supply of appropriate utilities. Now, as Mr. Pennington noted, there is a sewer line that runs right through the middle of the property. I think there's a pump station right down the, right down the road. Public water is available in Clayton Road. The easement that provides access to the property allows for ingress and egress, but doesn't allow for, for, for water lines. We are, we have spoke with the Asheville Firefighters' Organization about, about, about a water line in that road. It's, it hadn't happened yet, but, but, but may, we're hopeful it can happen in the future. So, the property is currently served by a well system, which is sufficient for the current proposed use and the expanded use. We would, we would, in view of the, in view of the staff recommendation and the limitations of the property, which I've discussed, the Planning Board recommendation for denial was frankly a little, a little curious and we were puzzled by it. And we, and we don't really think the reasons they gave for their, for their recommendation for denial really hold up to, to, to much scrutiny. The staff's analysis was thorough and we think that it's the correct one and we would ask for your approval. And so, we, we think this is consistent with the land use plan and consistent with the county's strategic plan. We'd ask for your approval and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to respond to them either now or later. And I'd like to bring Mr. Turner up for just a few minutes to talk to you about his interactions with the neighbors.
Okay, that's fine.
Make sure I don't take your remote control.
All right. And Mr. Turner, please just share your name and where you live, for the record, please.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the County Commission. My name is Brett Turner. I live in Charleston, South Carolina, and the name of my company is Whittaker Investment Group. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. A little history of my background. I've been in the real estate development business, starting in Florida in, since 1992, so about 28, 29 years now. Most of my experience has been in land development and developing master plan communities, subdivisions. I've done some commercial development and in the last five to 10 years, I've done quite a few vacation rental projects. I lived in Savannah for 18 years and developed a number of projects around the Savannah, the three-county Savannah area, and in a number of those were mixed-use projects downtown that had vacation rentals. I have also done some development in western North Carolina, up in the Cassiers area. So, I've long been a real fan of North Carolina and, and western North Carolina and, and have always loved Asheville. I've been here many times and have looked for the opportunity to find land to do something in Asheville. So, this is a, a property that I'm really excited about. It's a special piece of land on the French Broad River that I feel like something very special could be done with. As Mr. Oost mentioned, there has been some concern amongst the residents and when the Planning Board received comments from a few residents in the adjoining subdivision, I reached out to one of them who, the only person who actually made written comments and asked to meet with him and offered, and met with him and I believe it was about eight or nine other residents in the adjoining subdivision, all of which, by the way, were all property owners that were directly adjacent to this property. So, that's not surprising. Everyone wants to know what's gonna happen in their backyard and, you know, the typical concerns about what are they gonna see, what are they gonna hear? So, I met with them, we walked the property, we discussed it. You know, their concerns were primarily what's gonna be built, where is it gonna be built? They were all concerned about their individual views across the property towards the river. There was concerns about how high would it be? Was it gonna block their view from their property? And then, there was concerns about noise. Whenever you have more people and more cabins, there's always concern about noise. So, I tried to address all those concerns and I, I feel like they were well-received. You know, I am sensitive to the neighboring property owners. I've been in this business for a long time and I've lasted in this business because of reputation and doing the right thing and, and trying to develop quality projects. And so, I assured them that we would have rules and regulations. It wasn't gonna be a big party place. The type of product that I'm envisioning, small cottages are really intended to target couples visiting the area for romantic weekends. The amenities, right now, you have a large field out there with disc golf and things like that going on, a big fire pit area. You know, some residents mentioned fireworks at night and people playing music. That's not the kind of environment that I wanna develop. I mean, I intend to develop kind of a boutique cabin neighborhood that really peace and quiet is what people will be looking for. So, I feel like I provided them some assurances and intend to continue to communicate with them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. I don't believe we have any other members of the public sign up to speak, so Commissioners, are there any questions? Or should we, should we close the public hearing and then have further discussion? Okay. I'll close the public hearing at 6:09 PM. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time for the applicant? Or for, or for our planning staff?
I mean, I got a question for Nathan. So, you had mentioned something about the, the models that were there now, you said were not appropriate, the RV models? Did you say there was RV models that are there now, which were set up in a permanent fashion? Are you saying that people are living there permanently? Is that what's been going on?
Max, if you could dial up the staff presentation one more time.
I mean, you don't have to pull that up. I just, you know, if you just...
He's got, he said just one second.
I mean, I can say that, I mean, if you, if you get in your car and, you know, go towards Tennessee and turn left and you're gonna see the smaller, not, not what you're doing. I mean, I have a, I came out of the Metrox housing industry and so, I understand what you're doing. To me, it's a perfect place to do it if, if there, if it's a, if it's the right zoning for it. You know, that, that can be a good spot for what you're trying to do, is, from what I see. I'm familiar with the property. So, the houses there, they're gonna have to be moved. I mean, it really isn't relevant to whether I approve the zoning or not. I mean, it's a, it's a zoning request. It's not me digging in on, you know, trying to clean up whatever might be there. But, you know, you sounded like you had a little bit of concern about that and, you know, will the, the new buyer will have to deal with all that and I'm sure that, I'm sure that buyer understands all that.
Right. So, anytime we bring a rezoning application to you, we're gonna bring you a thorough analysis of the site. And that includes, starting with the zoning ordinance from page one and going all the way to the end. We're gonna vet every plan we have and we're gonna be as transparent as possible. So, what we found on site, if you look closest to the river on both the east and the west, you'll see two small rooftops on the east, one small rooftop on the west. It's an important distinction to note that these are not homes. They are not manufactured homes. They are park model RVs, which means they're recreational vehicles that have at some point been set on permanent foundations without the benefit of permits. They've had decks added onto them and I believe if we ask the applicant, 'cause I don't specifically know the answer to this question, I believe what he'll tell you is the current owner may have some arrangement where he's already operating a short-term rental or vacation rental complex, which I do not have a permit on file for. We've talked with Mr. Turner and Mr. Oost. I think the idea is that if they're approved in terms of this rezoning request, they would come to us, work with staff to put forward a site plan that then the Board of Adjustment could evaluate and, and look for either an approval of, or denial of a master site plan. Regardless, the structures that are in the floodway are gonna have to be dealt with. And whether that means that the applicant purchased the property or we work with the, the current property owner, since we did discover them, we have to take action at this point.
So, we don't know whether those are modular units or not?
They are park model, model RVs.
Oh, okay.
Which means they're not modular.
So, we've actually looked at, we've actually inspected the inside of them to see that they, they, what sticker they have?
So, we, I would have to get with...
What code they meet?
I understand that we have to look for the RVIA plaque. However, upon an outside inspection, it does appear that they have the hallmarks of park model RVs.
So, they look like them?
Yes.
Okay. So, I've been doing this for 40 years and I can be fooled, so...
Oh, I understand.
Okay. I'm just telling you, until you, until you go in and you find the certificate, you don't know whether, what, what they are, but that's not, and I don't wanna get into all that. Whoever buys the property is gonna be the one dealing with that. From a PS standpoint, based on what they're, they're wanting to do, they'll be able to meet the requirements of public, of a public service. Is that right?
Yes. And, and as far as staff's recommendation, we are recommending approval.
Yeah. And so, the, the unit's just kinda fell through the cracks because they were in the ETJ.
The transition of the...
I'm with you.
Right.
I'm with you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Pennington, I'm real familiar with this land and I guess what we're doing tonight is rezoning only, correct?
Correct.
That, and it fits all the constant things that it can be rezoned.
Yes. For what we have to evaluate in our current land use plan and our zoning ordinance, it, it does seem to be consistent with, and since there is PS zoning to the west, it is an extension thereof of that zoning district, so we don't have to worry necessarily about a spot zoning consideration.
So, I guess my question is, we pass or don't pass this rezoning tonight, depending on what everyone thinks? That has absolutely nothing to do with the three models on there of what's gonna happen after the zoning. That's when planning, zoning, or whoever will take care of that. Is that correct?
That's correct. And flood...
So, nothing to come back on Commissioners about?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I, I just have a question. You, you shared a template with us for zoning consistency statement. Would you like to talk to us about that?
Yes, I would. Okay. So, the first action we're gonna take, and remember, it's still a two-step process until we enact the 160D changes, which are coming soon, in the next few months. So, for now, we're gonna do this in a two-step process. Process number one is to identify through a motion which Commissioner deems this to be either inconsistent or consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Once that's identified, then I will walk you through the, the choices and then finish out the rest of this worksheet.
Okay. So, so we, can we talk about that a little bit more? So if someone, so, and we'll vote first on approval of a consistency or inconsistency motion.
Correct.
After that is voted on, if it is approved, then there would be a second motion regarding the proposed map amendment?
That's correct.
Okay. So two separate motions. And on the consistency, inconsistency motion, we've got these different criteria, A through G, you know, about proximity to transportation, steep slopes, et cetera. Does the motion need to cite that it is either consistent or with every single one of those items?
I'm glad you asked. We're going to talk about that right now.
Do you have to bat a?
So in the.
Or is 500 okay?
I hear you. So in the staff report on page three, what we did was we ran through consistent and inconsistent. The way that these are arranged actually is A, B, C, D, and E would be the ones that you would find if you thought that this was consistent with the plan. I would recommend F and G, being the flood hazard areas and separation from low-density residential uses, to be part of an inconsistent finding. And I can read to you just really quickly, if you'd like, what staff's analysis was for those items in the staff report, only if you need me to.
I think we, I think we can see that from the presentation. So I guess just a kind of a process question going forward. So in the future, when we're looking at other such rezoning requests, it'll be a similar process of you want to have, like, let's say we want to approve it. You would want a consistency statement and then to cite some of these specific criteria that reinforce that decision or pick some of the things that we find inconsistent.
Yes.
On a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
All right.
Just, I think following up on, is there a threshold number that we need to reach?
No, the state just says you need to adopt a consistency statement as part of a map amendment.
So it could, okay, so it could be one of these items?
It could.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's not any different than what we've done before. You just got a sheet.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and, and the presentation's a little bit longer, so.
The presentation was slightly longer than this one because this was a rather tricky map amendment to evaluate and I wanted to make sure you had all the facts.
Well, I think what's, what's a little different is that in the past, we've oftentimes just said a motion and we say it is consistent with the land use plan.
That's right.
We don't, we don't point to, you know, at least not consistently, always point to some specific criteria. But going forward, you'd like for us to at least cite something.
So we're just sort of setting the stage for transitioning into 160D implementation because we need to be very clear.
160D?
That's correct.
All right. For the public that's listening, and you want to tell them what that is?
I do. So 160D was recent adopted statutes that basically took the city's enabling legislation and county's enabling legislation and it put it together into one statute, a very long statute, but it was separate before. And I need to bring you some amendments very soon that codify that change.
Well, I'm going, I'm going to miss that so much.
All right.
So we're just, we're just being a little bit more detailed. The only thing I want to say, you know, for the future, and just challenge the board and challenge you on this, is that this particular development that, I'm sorry, give me your last name again? Burner? Turner, thank you. Yeah, no, we can't, we can't talk or discern through these masks, but anyhow. That, this is not going to go away. And to me, you know, it's like in 2013, somebody was probably wanting to put, you know, manufactured homes on that property and it was turned down because it was spot zoning, okay? Well, you know, that didn't change the perfect fit for that piece of property. And the perfect fit for that piece of property is, Mr. Turner, what you're doing for it. And that, that's not going to go away. There's going to be these little small areas that are, people are going to want to have these really nice little vacation places. They're going to be close to the river, they're going to be just outside of the, you know, the, they're going to be in the hundred-year, you know, flood zone. And we're going, you're going to want to do them on that river. And so PS is what we have right now that allows us to do that. But we're, you know, you're going to have to figure out, I mean, you're, you're having to push it into PS to make it work.
That's a good point. And that's why.
And you need something else, along, you need something else to allow, you know, whether they're modular units or whether they're manufactured homes or whether they're these, these little cabins that you're building that are, you know, that. So you're going to have to figure that out down the road, so. Not sure what that looks like, but it'd, it'd be good, good to figure that out because there's, there's going to be more than just Mr. Turner wanting to do this.
And I think that's a good discussion for the comprehensive plan when we get to that point, to, to look at those areas.
Yeah.
So, so just one, one clarification on that point. So vacation rental properties are generally allowed as a use throughout the county. Maybe there's some places that are not, but they're generally allowed, but up to a certain number of units, right? Like under R1, if you want to go build four or five cabins and rent them out on a short-term basis, you could do that. But the distinction here, and again, I know we're doing a rezoning, we're not approving a specific plan, but the idea is that the property owner has indicated, you'd probably like to have more than that. But under this zoning, you can only do up to 10, is my understanding. Is that, is that correct?
Right. One slight clarification. Across the county, if you had, say, just a single-family home and you wanted to rent that out on a short-term basis, that's permitted as of right.
Right.
With a two-night minimum. What you're describing is actually called a vacation rental complex. You can do that up to 10 units. It's actually reviewed as a conditional use permit in the PS zoning district.
Okay.
If, if there was a consideration for more than 10 units, that would actually be reviewed as a hotel motel use, which is allowed in PS.
Okay.
But there's a, there's a distinction also that says anytime you have more than four units, that's for a principal use, that's reviewed as a conditional use permit as well.
But under, under R1, if the property owner decided, hey, I'm going to go build nine nice little cottages, they don't have to explain what it's for. They could rent them out long-term or they could choose to rent them out short-term. That's really their, their business, right? So that, that would be allowed currently?
No, it would not. Vacation rental complexes are not allowed in R1, and that's why they're seeking the zoning change.
Okay. So even doing, you could do one, right? You could build a house.
Could build a house.
And you could rent that one out short-term or long-term, but if you built two houses, it would not be.
One to two. But once you start passing that threshold, that's where you get into the complex.
Okay.
That's where the Board of Adjustment reviews the site-specific plan. And that's important. You want that to happen because you want to make sure you have the compatibility with, say, an adjacent residential neighborhood.
Thank you for talking to me. So three would be not allowed?
Three would be allowed if the zoning was changed and they submitted.
Under the current zoning, three would not be allowed.
Not under R1.
That's correct.
Okay.
So PS, so PS is the right fit then?
Yes. It is the logical, logical choice. And if you look at it right now, really what's going on the site, it's non-conforming. It doesn't really mesh with, with what the intent of R1 is.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that this is to approve that it is consistent as within proximity to the major transportation corridors. It's outside of steep slope areas and within proximity to the infrastructure, combined water and sewer, sewer service area. So I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right. There's a motion in the second, and I believe items A, B, and C were cited in the motion. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a second motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Okay. And, and so, Mr. Pennington, for the record, do we, do we need to read this statement?
No, you don't. I have what I need. Therefore, based on what you have told me, you would find that the proposed map amendment is not detrimental to the owner's adjacent neighbors and surrounding community, as it does meet a number of goals. Therefore, the requested zoning would be reasonable and in the public interest. Upon a motion that the application is consistent, then you may move forward with your next motion, which is a motion to.
To support the re, the rezoning and the map amendment. All right. Very good. We've got a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Mr. Pennington, thank you. Mr. Rose, Mr. Turner, thank you for being with us. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing on the FY 2022 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Applications. And Matt Cable will present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present for you tonight our FY 2022 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Applications. At the onset, I want to let you know that the hearing was noticed in the Asheville Citizen Times in accordance with the requirements of the grant application, was posted on the Buncombe County website, and was distributed to various organizations and groups that had an interest in transportation services provided. Buncombe County's transportation system, Mountain Mobility, provides transportation to senior adults, persons with disabilities, clients of human service agencies, members of the general public, clients of Medicaid, and citizens of the City of Asheville who are eligible for ADA complimentary pair transit. Buncombe County is the designated applicant and recipient of state and federal transportation funds made available through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. As a designated applicant and recipient, we must possess the technical and financial capacity to apply for, administer, operate, and carry out these projects. And we must comply with all applicable state and federal laws, regulations, and guidelines. Your request for board action includes a brief summary of the requests that will be submitted as part of the grant application, should the board approve. There are also attached documents, which include a memorandum, which provide additional detail as well as supporting budgetary documents related to the funding. As a summary, the FY 2022 5311 grant funding would include $976,636 in federal funds and require a match of local general dollars of $244,160. The total combined value being just over 1.2 million. The grant funds would support administration, and again, those details are provided. But these are for management contract expenditures, data processing costs for our routing and scheduling software, utilities for the actual operations facility, and the lease of office space for that operating contractor. This grant application also includes capital acquisition. And this includes two 25-foot hybrid electric light transit vehicles, which would be replacing two existing CNG alternative fuel vehicles. One 22-foot hybrid, hybrid electric light transit vehicle to replace an existing gas vehicle. And four raised roof lift vans with propane conversions, in this case, replacing existing lift vehicles without the propane conversions, so gas fuel vehicles. Also included are three 20-foot light transit vehicles. These will be regular gasoline-fueled vehicles and two handheld radio units. The composition and recommendation for these vehicle fleet types are to provide, one, environmental benefit, but also fleet diversification and providing a variety of different fuel sources. That allows the system to be responsive, particularly in an emergency situation where perhaps fuel is impacted, which has happened to us many times before. I will say that the selection of vehicles is provided within the grant. So the grant tells you what options that you can look for in terms of different fuel types. And the 20-foot light transit vehicle did not have an alternative fuel option for us to pursue in that particular grant application. Again, the request for the board action tonight is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution. This resolution would authorize the chairman to execute an application for this funding, which again, would be in fiscal year 2022, and enter into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation and also provide the necessary certifications and grant documents. I'm happy to answer any questions you have now or as we go into public hearing.
Any questions at this time? All right. Let's open the public hearing at 6:31 PM. Mr. Joyner, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right. I'll close the public hearing at 6:32 PM. Is there a motion to approve the resolution and authorize the chairman to execute the application and provide the necessary certifications and grant documents?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Next up is a public hearing regarding the Pratt and Whitney Economic Development Agreement. And Tim Love, Buncombe County Intergovernmental Relations Director, will get us started.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you this evening. Before I begin, I'd like to take a quick moment to acknowledge some of our, our team that is here today that will be sharing in this presentation. Specifically, we've got two folks from Pratt and Whitney, Dan Field, Tom Shree. We've also got Clark Duncan with us with Economic Development Coalition, Dr. John Gossett with AB Tech. And additionally, we also have Ben Teague representing Biltmore Farms. As part of this conversation today, we, last week presented to the board an update on the Pratt and Whitney announcement. And today, as part of the public hearing, want to present additional details for you. So we'll use a few slides to get us through this, but please stop me if you have any questions. This will be a shared presentation, so I'll kick us off, but I'd like from you to hear, I'd like for you and the public to hear from Pratt and Whitney directly, so I'll, I'll hand it over to Dan shortly. In terms of the background and request, so as presented last week, on October 22nd, Pratt and Whitney announced that it had chosen Buncombe County for its expansion project. As you may recall, Pratt and Whitney is a designer and manufacturer of aircraft engines and power systems. These serve the commercial, military, and business aircraft sectors. Pratt and Whitney itself is a Fortune 50 employer with about 40,000 employees and about $21 billion in revenue in 2019. Pratt and Whitney is, you know, another key element in the Buncombe County portfolio and further bolsters our aerospace sort of sector and makes us sort of a destination in, in the southeast. As presented last week, also want to acknowledge that Pratt and Whitney is a division of Raytheon Technologies. This is a result of the merger that happened in April 2020 between UTC, United Technologies, and Raytheon. In terms of the requests today, we're before the board to ask for your consideration for approval of economic development incentives for Pratt and Whitney, as well as approval for the economic development agreement between Pratt and Whitney and Buncombe County. For both of those items, you, you would need a public hearing and to approve the formal resolution. As presented last week, want to sort of lay some context for where we are in Buncombe County. And so this image, it shows us on, on I-26 heading south towards Biltmore Town Square. On the right, you can see that there's a rectangle of approximately 100 acres right as you cross the French Broad River. This is the, the potential future home of Pratt and Whitney. Further to the right, you see a longer rectangle. This represents a bridge across the French Broad River that will provide access to this site. As a reminder, this bridge hasn't been funded with any Buncombe County dollars. This is funded through Golden Leaf Dollars specifically. In terms of the scope of the project, we've talked about this a lot. And I'll do kind of a quick teaser and then I'll invite Dan Field to come talk about the project in depth. But Pratt and Whitney in general will construct a 1 million square foot facility in Biltmore Park West. Additionally, they will create 800 new jobs and invest $650 million in real and business personal property in Buncombe County. Additionally, of those 800 jobs, the average wage will be $68,000 a year. These numbers, we think are impressive and we think align well, as the tagline says, with the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners 2025 Strategic Plan and specifically the emphasis on creating higher-wage jobs in this community, specifically catching up and surpassing the median household income, which we lag behind in this community. Additionally, seeking to create, create additional jobs in target industries like aerospace. So we do feel that this aligns, but we'll allow you to learn more about the project today. And at this point, I'd like to ask Pratt and Whitney, specifically Dan Field, to, to join me at the podium. I'll take a seat. And Dan, if you'd like to share with us the, the project, that'd be great.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and consideration. And on behalf of the company, first off, let me say thank you. me say thank you for considering this proposed package. We are extremely excited about what for us and we feel for the county represents a generational project that will bring both investment and jobs to the Buncombe County area, and we're excited to be a part of that. So let me start off and introduce you to the company. My name is Dan Field. I will be the project execution lead and eventual site leader of the facility when it's constructed and fully up and running. I'm excited to become a member of this community and bring this investment and change to the area. Pratt &amp; Whitney is a company that's been in business for over 90 years, started out as an aviation propulsion company providing piston power to airplanes at the golden era of aviation, and has since entered into all sectors of aerospace propulsion. And we make a wide range of products from both aerospace for helicopter engines, large commercial engines for airliners, small turboprops for commuter airlines, and, as Tim said, military engines as well. At a glance, we're a global company with over 90,000 engines in service. We have growing capacity worldwide. Our key priorities are to deliver on cost and plan execution to our shareholders and to our communities. We cherish continued innovation and product enhancement, and we like to invest our money wisely in areas that, you know, align well with our goals and values. I'd also share that, you know, of our $21 billion in sales in 2019, over half of that is large commercial engines. Pratt &amp; Whitney Canada, which is the sector of our business that makes small engines, represents a little bit less than 25% of our business, and military engines is around 20% to 30% of our business. I'm going to kind of walk you through some of our values as a company. And first, I want to start off with our commitment to environmental sustainability and stewardship. It's a core value for Pratt &amp; Whitney. It's very important to us, and we want to be good stewards of the land and the areas that we're provided. We've done a lot over the last several years to significantly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions while tripling our output, and also reducing the amount of water that we use on a yearly basis to create our products. And not only do we do an important job of reducing the amount of energy and water that we consume to create those products, but we're also producing an extremely green product. Over 80% of the volume that will be generated at this facility will support our geared turbofan engine family. The geared turbofan is a leap change product that has presented double-digit fuel burn savings to the industry. Typically, we get excited when we improve fuel burn by 2% to 3%, but in the case of this engine, we've seen a 16% improvement in overall fuel burn. If you couple that with the airframe improvements that some of our partner companies like Boeing and Airbus have provided, you see almost a 20% improvement in overall fuel burn for the engines that we produce. It's a green product. Again, we've reduced emissions by 50%, and we've also reduced the amount of noise that the engine makes by 75%. Now, you wouldn't think that a 75% reduction in overall noise footprint would necessarily translate into an environmental impact, but if you think about it, in areas where we fly that are noise-sensitive, airlines are required to fly longer routes around those noise-sensitive areas. With an engine that produces less noise, we can fly more direct routes, and therefore, you get a second-order benefit of reduced fuel burn as well. So we're really excited to, again, be an environmentally conscious company that's producing a very green product, and we're doing that in an advanced manufacturing facility that we intend to construct here in Buncombe County. We put a lot of emphasis on investment and productivity improvements through the use of automation, and also in our inspection and technology for quality inspection, right? If you deliver a quality product, you've got happy customers. The vision for the project is to create a world-class turbine airfoil production facility. So turbine airfoils are the small airplane wing-shaped components that go into the back of a jet engine. They extract the energy from the combustion that happens in the combustion chamber and use that to create the propulsive motive force to drive the airplane forward. We're doing this in a million-square-foot facility that represents a $650 million total potential investment in the county. It will generate 800 total projected jobs with an anticipated wage of $68,000 per year on average. Again, like I said, we're going to create a state-of-the-art facility. This will be a showpiece for all aerospace manufacturers to come and view what we've done inside this facility to generate these parts in a lean factory, and we've also got a LEED-certified facility that we're aiming for as a goal. So again, like I said, a green company producing a green product in a green facility. So right now, we have a target of achieving LEED-certified. We have the potential of a stretch goal for LEED Silver, and that's exciting to us. As far as timeline is concerned for the project, we expect to begin construction activities here in December of this year. Those construction activities will continue through 2022. We'll start to hire our workforce to support this facility in the second half, in the later part of the second half of 2021, and also begin to install the equipment that will produce the parts. We have an anticipated online of production in the second quarter of 2022 as well. The jobs that this facility will create will vary and utilize a wide range of skills. They'll be mostly in the manufacturing, technical, professional, and engineering sectors. It's our intent to create, in partnership with AB Tech and the county, an excellent talent pipeline and give people opportunities to start in our factory with a great job and be able to work their way up to upper levels of increasing responsibility and opportunity within our facility. We're going to be looking for a diverse skill set and a diverse workforce. These are important values to our company, and we appreciate the partnership that we have seen so far from the county and AB Tech in helping us achieve that goal. Corporate citizenship is also important to us. We'll be investing in our future, like I spoke about, in STEM, and that'll help us create the talent pipeline that we need to support this project and support the workforce that we need in order to run this facility effectively. We invest in our heroes, in our military families, and invest in our communities as well. It's important that we become a partnership, we become a partner with the county and the local area in order to benefit each other mutually. Some of the other organizations that we have worked with in the past include Engineers Without Borders, the First Robotics, which is a high school program that allows high school students to create a robot and compete in competitions. It really promotes a lot of the STEM activities. Junior Achievement, the National Academy Foundation, United Way in both the United States and Canada, and the USO as well. This is a selection of nationwide corporate citizenship collaborations that we have, but we're looking forward as well to partnering with local charities and local community of initiatives as well here in Buncombe County to help bolster both the community and our partnership between us. In closing, I'll say that we succeed in this project together. This project helps fulfill our 2020 priorities and commitments. We'll be using our leadership model, which is based on empowerment at the lowest levels of the organization all the way through the top. We have a purpose to connect people, grow economies, and defend freedom. We have an operating system that produces lean facilities that are environmentally conscious and extremely efficient, and all of this is tied together with our values that include safety, trust in our employees, integrity for everyone, respect amongst peers, innovation of technology, and excellence. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Thank you for that, Dan Field. I'm back to talk through now the Economic Development Agreement. Hope you found Dan's presentation sort of detailed in providing some additional context to the project. In terms of the Economic Development Agreement, this has been included in the board's packet and has been posted for public review, so I'm going to walk through some of the highlights. This is, of course, a contract, so there's additional details that you won't get from me today, but this is to give you a sense of the structure of the agreement. So the incentive structure as a whole, it's a total incentive of not to exceed $27 million. And this will end up being an annual incentive of not to exceed $2.6 million. The term of this agreement is 14 years, which includes 10-year creation period as well as a four-year retention period. Within this agreement, there's an additional incentive, it's a performance incentive, of $1 million that's included within that existing 27 million. This performance incentive I'll talk about on a subsequent slide, but is for achieving expanded commitments locally. The payout structure, very important to this board, is a pay-for-performance model or a pro-rata structure. So there are specific milestones that have been created between Buncombe County and Pratt. If those milestones are met, incentives will be awarded. If those milestones are not, there will be a prorated formula put in place to account for that. These milestones are specific as it relates to the number of jobs created in a year, as well as the amount of capital investment in a year, as well as the average wage of those jobs that are created for that year. Regarding the performance incentive, just a few details here. The basic idea is that when Pratt looked to expand this project, they thought of another $120 million and additional 50 full-time jobs that they would want to create to get us to that total number of $800 and $650 million in investment. The agreement, as defined in the EDA, is that an additional $1 million incentive could potentially be awarded for hitting any of the three big milestones. So creating the additional 50 jobs, creating the additional $120 million, and creating those 50 jobs at a $68,000 average wage. And so that's detailed on the slide, and you can see how those incentives would be broken out. Each of these incentives is available to the company upon reaching those milestones as long as they maintain them. In terms of the schedule, a lot of content on this slide, I won't walk you fully through it, except in concept. This is a part of the agreement, and this is the schedule that I mentioned earlier. When we talk about annual milestones, this is what Pratt and Buncombe County have agreed upon are the targets. As an example, in calendar year 2020, so starting January 1 through December 31st, the total incentive is $2.6 million. This is based on those annual targets in that first slide of $0 in 2020 for jobs and investment. The rationale here is the project is just starting. There are certain efforts that are being taken in terms of investment, in terms of site prep, that won't be reflected on the tax scrolls. Those items will be reflected next year as we start calendar year 2021, where we expect Pratt &amp; Whitney to be at $72 million in capital investment, but not quite ready to hire because they won't have a building complete. In the year 2022, we expect to be at $332 million in capital investment, and at that point of having hired 250 people within this plant. These numbers are important, and this is how the pro-rata formula will be based. An additional consideration is that our point that we're measuring performance is January 1 of a given year. So as we look at the calendar year 2022, we'll be measuring at a point to determine that there's 250 jobs. In all likelihood, by the time we actually make a payout later in that year, those numbers will be greatly increased and probably closer to the 2023 numbers, but by the nature of when we measure performance, which is at the beginning of the tax year, we may not reflect the full year's activity. So just wanted to share that. You can see how the incentives break out in the total incentive column. You can see when the retention period kicks in for a total agreement lasting about 14 years. For those that follow this closely, our typical agreement doesn't necessarily go for a 14-year period. You might expect them to be shorter, sometimes five years, sometimes three, sometimes 10. This is an extended agreement and shows Pratt's commitment to be in our community for the next 14 years, which we think is important. Those are the incentives, but something important is, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we considering this as a board and staff? And there's the obvious tagline that we've talked about over and over again. It's the creation of 800 jobs in our community and the investment of almost half a billion dollars in our community in taxable equipment. The deal that is currently structured, cash flows by year three, so that means the incentives that are going out the door are offset by the tax revenues that are coming in as Pratt continues to construct its facility, continues to invest in equipment. Additionally, we anticipate a 12-year break-even point. This is, of course, based on economic factors. We, you know, Pratt has to hit their targets, the economy has to stay on track, but if all works well, you know, within 12 years, this will be sort of a break-even. There's additional impacts that we don't factor in when we talk to the board. As we said last week at briefing, we focus on ad valorem taxes, you know, so the tax amount that's coming in from Pratt. But we know there are additional benefits that we'll feel in this community. We just don't factor that into the cash flow because we think it's somewhat misleading as a county government. Those examples are one-time construction impacts. A 1 million square foot facility that requires all of this grading and construction could result in 676 jobs and about $35 million in labor income. This is a study that's been done by the Economic Development Coalition based on widely-accepted economic development models. Additionally, there's a labor impact of about $54 million, you know, so this is the take-home pay of 800 staff that are, will be in our community. The table summarizes some of the impacts, and what I'll focus on normally with you is the direct impact, so the clear 800 jobs, the $54 million in labor income. But there's also additional indirect and induced benefits. And so those indirect benefits, those are the benefits of local suppliers, those business-to-business transactions, the folks that Pratt &amp; Whitney do business with in our community that will benefit from that additional business. Additionally, there's the induced benefit, and in some ways, this is what it's all about. This is those transactions, it's the paychecks that are being spent. It's the 800 employees in our community going to the grocery store, buying houses, whatever it is they're doing. So when you look at the total direct, indirect, and induced impact, we're talking about 1,200 jobs and $76 million, which is a tremendous impact. But I'll reiterate once again, when we present something to you and we talk about cash flow, we're talking about direct ad valorem taxes so that we know when we break even. Additionally, as I said earlier in the presentation, we know wages are critical in our community. Typically, when we bring you an agreement, we talk about those jobs and make sure that we're comparing those jobs to understand how they stack up to other jobs in our community. I'm fortunate that we can get to say this today, but 800 of the 800 jobs that are presented today qualify for the jobs incentive in our economic development policy. That means that each of these jobs is above $20.94 an hour in our community, which is something very important to say. Bullet two kind of builds on this point. All of these jobs are considered to be quote-unquote "living wage" jobs. These are based on the 2020 Just Economics figures, where a living wage job is considered to be $1,550 per hour or $32,000 annually without health insurance. I'd also add that Pratt &amp; Whitney will be providing health insurance benefits to its employees. So it's important to recognize the quality of the jobs and kind of what we've been chasing. This isn't always the case that we bring before you. Sometimes all jobs don't qualify, but in this case, 800 do. There've been a lot of questions about the types of jobs that'll be created, and so I wanted to present you, from an illustrative perspective, what some of those jobs look like. We say illustrative because the reality is, Dan can't tell you exactly today how many machine operators he's going to hire. He can give you a good example, and that's what we've done for you today. So this presentation, it starts with annual wages of about $55,000 as the lowest wage on the run, and it gives you the number of those jobs, and then tells you if it's a living wage job, if it's incentive-eligible, does it exceed median household income as defined by the US Census, and does it exceed per capita income? And so all that information is kind of presented into that table. The quick story here is all of these jobs exceed all of those measures that I presented to you. There's footnotes for those that can't, or that are paying attention to see where these sources are coming from. You can also see the wage progression, so there's no doubt that the majority of these jobs are within that $55,000 annual wage bracket. If you track to the facility's maintenance line, which is about, you know, seven or six down, you see that we jump into a new bracket of around $75,000. six down, you see that we jump into a new bracket of around $75,000, and you can see there's a grouping of jobs there as well. If you continue down the path to the manufacturing engineer, you begin to see jobs in the $112,000 range and the nature of those jobs. And so just wanted to present that because I know this is of keen interest, you know, it's great that we're creating 800 jobs, but what kind? And I think this is important to present. Before I invite Clark Duncan to come talk about partnership and sort of the team, I wanted to see if there were any initial questions from the board regarding the Economic Development Agreement, regarding the incentives, anything of that nature.
It doesn't look like there's any initial questions or, not at this time.
Well, I'm not going far, but I'd like to invite Clark Duncan with the Economic Development Coalition to present some quick remarks on the team as a whole, as well as the significance of this project.
Thank you, Tim. I haven't invented a mask yet that doesn't fog up the glasses. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am so proud to be with you this evening, to thank you publicly for your leadership, not just on this project, but for your ongoing stewardship of economic development in our community and our shared goals of economic mobility and expanded opportunity, community prosperity, and growing a sustainable tax base here in Buncombe County. The data tells us that our average wage in Buncombe County lags the state of North Carolina by fully 20%. Our average wage lags the average wage of the nation by fully 35%. And even as we approach these milestones of growth, half a million residents coming in the metro area within a few years, a $22 billion GDP in our regional economy, we also understand our poverty rate is a very sticky 12%, representing nearly 50,000 residents in the four counties of the MSA. And these challenges are real, and they require common purpose, and they require partnership. And I'd like to recognize the leadership of the county this evening, as well as the broad and diverse set of partners on the screen above us that have worked diligently together for 15 months to advance Buncombe County as the future home to Pratt and Whitney's turbine airfoil manufacturing facility. With us tonight, already recognized Dr. John Gossett and his incredibly talented team at AB Tech, our friend Big Teague with Biltmore Farms, Corey Atkins representing the Chambers Community Betterment Foundation, and several that could not travel to be with us this evening. I would mention Representative Brian Turner, Senator Chuck Edwards in the Western delegation, Secretary of Commerce Tony Copeland with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, CEO Chris Chung with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, my friend and WNC native Scott Hamilton, who's CEO of the North Carolina Golden Leaf Foundation. Across our state, each of these entities recognize the value of high-wage, upwardly-mobile, STEM-oriented employment that will support a full build-out over $76 million in new annualized labor income to families in Buncombe County, and that's incredibly exciting. Like you, they recognize the generational impact of quality economic development in confronting these socio-economic challenges that we face in western North Carolina. So once again, thank you for your leadership. Proud to be with you this evening.
All right, thank you, Clark. All right, Commissioners, at this point, I'd like to bring us back to the original request for board action. So this evening, we're seeking approval of the resolution, which would authorize approval of the economic development incentives, as well as the Economic Development Agreement. So a single resolution that accomplishes both goals. If you have any questions, I'm glad to take those now. I'm also glad to sit down if you'd like to open the public hearing.
Are there any questions now?
I'd just like to ask Chairman if Dan could come back up from Pratt and Whitney. We have had an opportunity to be introduced to Dan and some other folks at Pratt and Whitney, you know, individually in the past, and, you know, we had a conversation regarding, it's around STEM and career and technical and expansion, and, you know, more than that, reaching out to families and letting them know that there are high school kids who are trying to decide what they want to do, that Pratt and Whitney has a program where they can reach out to them, they can actually, you know, work for them while they're going to school and go to work after school, but, and I'd like you to tell a little bit about that. Also tell a little bit about the availability of paying for additional, you know, college, and also the, what happened, what you're able to do by reaching out to people that may be employed in other areas, other jobs, but have skill sets that would work at Pratt and Whitney and some of those programs that you had mentioned before. I'd like for the public to hear a little bit about them tonight.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. And what I'll say is, I'll answer that in three parts. So first and foremost, we spoke at great length today with both the Community Betterment Foundation and AB Tech about the possibility of starting an apprenticeship-type program to reach out directly to high school students. And then the second part, to answer your question, is we would see that formulate into the use of our employee-scholar program. And what the corporation's employee-scholar program is, is that it's a upfront investment in our workforce. So I could envision an opportunity where a high school student could come work for us after high school and gone through a apprenticeship program, work on second shift, work on first shift, and then potentially utilize our employee-scholar program after they've been employed with us for a period of time to go and seek a degree. And what the employee-scholar program does is it provides for upfront tuition payment if one of our employees chooses to pursue a college degree that's aligned with our business. So, for example, some, a machinist may want to become an engineer. That individual could utilize the employee-scholar program to go to an engineering school while they work on second shift or work on first shift, and get that degree, and then enhance their upward mobility within the company. And again, like I said, it's an upfront payment program. It's not a reimbursement program that is traditional for college payments. So there is no out-of-pocket initial expense to employees. It's considered a benefit that is paid out directly. And as far as the last part of your question there, again, we see the upward mobility in the opportunity there to increase and enhance our workforce and create a talent pipeline.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields. I don't think we have any other questions at this time. We do need to hold the public hearing on consideration of the Economic Development Agreement, and my understanding is we've got a pretty significant number of folks who have signed up, so this will probably, this will take a while, but it's an important part of the process. So Mr. Joyner has advised that we have about 30 people who have indicated they wish to speak, and each person can have up to three minutes to express their comments. Mr. Joyner, is there a process, I'm sure all the folks have probably been advised of our procedures, is there a process in place? Normally, when folks are here and comment, we have a little light that goes off when your time's just about up, and another one when your time's up. So is there a process to indicate to folks when their time has gotten near and then completed?
Yes, communication is handling that, and they will notify the individual on the line when that time is getting close.
Okay.
And they will cut off the time when necessary.
Perfect. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and start the public hearing at 7:05 PM, and we'll go ahead and we'll take our first residents. We ask folks to share their name, where they live, and then we'll listen.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Jones, and I live in Swanonoa. This Pratt and Whitney project is nothing to cheer for. How does the promise of 800 jobs justify getting into bed with one of the largest war profiteers in the world? Raytheon, Pratt and Whitney's parent company, is responsible for the deadly F-35 fighter jet and a major supplier of weapons to Saudi Arabia in its ongoing five-year war on Yemen. Have you seen the pictures of the starving children in Yemen? The UN calls it the largest humanitarian crisis on Earth, with over 100,000 dead, millions displaced, cholera and starvation affecting 80% of the population, and one of the very worst COVID death rates in the world. It's a living hell, and Raytheon profits from it. Surely you Commissioners understand that climate change is real and urgent, and that we humans are facing extinction because of it. And I hope you know that the U.S. military-industrial complex, driven by the likes of Raytheon, is the single greatest polluter on Earth. Are you willing to be complicit with these forces of ecocide and genocide? About those promised 800 jobs, are they really so compelling? They say the average salary, the mean, will be $68,000, but the median salary will be $55,000. That's what most people will be making. Do we know what health or safety hazards these workers might be exposed to, or the environmental impact of this plant on our beautiful land? Or how long these non-unionized jobs will last? The 20,000 workers just laid off from Raytheon last month should be a warning to us. Studies at UMass Amherst and Brown University have shown conclusively that many more jobs are created by investing in clean energy, infrastructure, healthcare, and education than by investing in the military-industrial complex. I can give you references if you like. What we should be doing is investing directly in our own local businesses and social services, which are now in crisis because of the pandemic. Reparations to the African-American community should be at the top of that list. I believe we all want peace in this world, good jobs, and a sustainable future for our children and grandchildren. We can do this. Don't sell us out. Say no to the Pratt and Whitney deal. That would be something to cheer for. Thank you.
My name is Susan Oller. I live in Asheville. I am going to start with a quote from Prospect magazine about a Raytheon plant in Scotland. Quote, "Raytheon has used the slogan 'Strike with creativity,' and its precision bombs have been discovered in the wreckage of hundreds of civilian sites in Yemen, including hospitals, schools, and infrastructure indispensable to the civilian populations such as granaries, groundwater pumps, and water tanks," end quote. Raytheon did not conduct these airstrikes, they were done by Saudi Arabia, but the bombs used came from Raytheon, and the delivery systems of F-35s were also from Raytheon. While the UK government, like the U.S. government, are the ones responsible for overseeing any weapons sales to foreign countries, both countries are failing at that job. The Arms Control Act seems to have no oversight and no enforcement. The UN has reported that 80% of the population of 22 million people in Yemen are in need of humanitarian assistance. People in Yemen are facing death, disease, displacement, and starvation. It is reported that over 100,000 people have died in Yemen from the violence visited on them by Saudi Arabia and UAE with Raytheon-made weapons. Excuse me, that's Raytheon-made weapons. This war on Yemen started in 2015 under the Obama administration, but it clearly has seen bilateral support in the U.S. Congress. Efforts to stop Raytheon from selling weapons to Saudi Arabia have been met with no success in the U.S. or the UK. A recent Secretary of Defense by the name of Mark Esper was a former Raytheon top lobbyist. Secretary Esper made sure that an amendment to an NDAA bill to stop the U.S. involvement in the war on Yemen did not pass Congress. President Trump has recently publicly stated that UAE should also be able to buy F-35s, which will be used to bomb Yemen. Today, we have corporate control of politicians rather than political control of corporations. That applies on the federal and the local level. I do not want to see this kind of industry for the future in our beautiful mountains and with the wonderfully creative, caring people who live here. I do not want to contribute to abject misery and environmental destruction in other parts of the world just so people here can have supposedly good jobs. The whole idea of building a giant factory for creation of engines for bomb delivery systems is extremely nauseating to me. I do not want to see Raytheon making a killing off a killing in our community. I do not want to see a leading merchant of death set up shop in our sacred mountains. Thank you.
Mr. Erlich, you are live.
This is Roger. We, a few years ago, bought the old Gentry Christmas Tree Farm in Tandler, 17 beautiful acres spanning Harmony Creek with a beautiful hilltop and highway frontage. I want to, I think that it would be very inappropriate for the county to approve this package when we cannot be there in person to have a proper public hearing, and with how recently this was unveiled. I believe that, under the conditions of COVID, I know that this was presented to you from some very powerful actors, and it looks very good, but I think that if we, there are many better things that we could do with these economic development dollars that wouldn't be literally rewarding a boom and bust business, and the company has already said that they would, that they are going to come here. Why should we be giving them $23 million of tax subsidies to reward them when we're already looking at a bunch of laid-off workers from the GE subsidies, an industry that is making very similar airfoils? I know that there are many businesses here, there's nothing for us to really stop them from leaving huge liabilities, and there's, we have a depressed civilian aircraft industry. I know that this was put together back, you know, kind of behind the scenes, and that's why it would be a travesty for you to sell the soul of county taxpayers by, especially now that the civilian aircraft industry is depressed. It's almost assured that the only way that this is going to succeed is if we, if we go ahead, you know, hitching our wagon to more global unrest and selling. So if we're going to have an agreement, if we're going to have an agreement here, you need to put this on hold if you're not rejecting it tonight. If you could put a special letter of agreement on, like, that are in that agreement, which I've just seen the first time this evening, that indicate that no civilian, I mean, military aircraft will be built, and that they'll pay for any deaths that would result from these murderous weapons. We could be building windmills, and we could be building small hydropower with the same kind of technology, and then we'd be leading the world like the Japanese did with the small cars.
Claire, are you ready?
Yes.
You're live.
This is Claire Hanahan. Councilmembers, let's not fool ourselves. We know Pratt and Whitney is part of war profiteer Raytheon Technologies. We know engines manufactured here would be mounted in Lockheed Martin's F-35 fighter jets. Fifty of these stealth fighter jets are part of the $23 billion arms deal with the United Arab Emirates just announced by the Trump administration. Let's not fool ourselves. The UAE is part of a military coalition waging the genocidal war on Yemen. Does your end goal of 800 potential new jobs with economic benefits to Buncombe County, does this goal justify... does this goal justify being an accomplice in war crimes? A decision to incentivize Pratt Whitney would be morally and ethically reprehensible and short-sighted as well. These engines would also power commercial jets at a time when the future of the airline industry is uncertain. Carbon-intensive air travel contributes significantly to climate change and should be curtailed, not subsidized. Your projections of revenue-neutral exchange is not convincing. Eight hundred jobs, is that all? Eight hundred? But what of the 450 and more workers in Connecticut who lost their jobs when Raytheon made its plans to move Pratt Whitney here? How far could the $27 million incentive dollars go if they were used to keep afloat our local businesses? How many nurses, firefighters, teachers, and other frontline workers could be supported with living wages? And how many truly affordable homes could be built on those 100 acres at Deltmore Park West? And what of the environmental damage of this industrial development? Has the impact of a five-lane bridge over the French Broad River been thoroughly examined? Subsidizing this obscenely wealthy Raytheon Technologies would be another theft from the working people of Buncombe County, already robbed for decades by corrupt county officials. Let's not fool ourselves. This deal will not better our community. It will contaminate us with further complicity in the war industry and will desecrate these sacred mountains. Future generations will not look kindly on our reliance on the war economy. Please don't incentivize Pratt Whitney. Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes.
You are live now.
Okay, thank you. Hello, this is Kevin Kimery, and I live in Black Mountain. I just wanted to extend sincere appreciation to the Board of Commissioners and the county officials for tirelessly working on bringing Pratt Whitney to Buncombe County. Your bipartisan efforts to bring excellence to our region show that you understand how vital these kinds of expansions are. I'm sure it's tough sometimes to open the county's pocketbook for these kinds of projects because you may face some criticism, but I do believe that negativity comes from folks who just really don't understand the full scope. You understand that your efforts and the incentive dollars that will go to Pratt Whitney will bring transformative impacts to the local workforce, and the county will be paid back through an expanded tax base. In projects like this, I also have the opportunity to be on the front lines. I'm the Director of Economic and Workforce Development at AB Tech, and I administer the state's customized training program through the North Carolina Community College System, which is always one of the incentives that's offered to expanding companies. So as in other projects over the last decade, I was involved in the recruiting process and helping to structure the important incentives for workforce training. And the state has committed funding for a substantial training package. I will be working directly with our local workforce and Pratt Whitney personnel for years to come, and because of this close connection, I am keenly aware of how important this project will be to our region. You know, I'm on the front lines, and I see the folks who need jobs and good-paying jobs and see what an impact this has on our area. So just like each of you, I have confidence that this will be a magnet for other aerospace-related industries, which will certainly further enhance our local economy. So I want to thank, I want to thank you for your service, to our citizens, for the Commissioners and the county, for your collective leadership, and also for a shared vision for a vibrant economy in Buncombe County. Thank you.
Susan, you're live. Or Cynthia, you're live.
Okay, thank you. My name is Cynthia Heil. I've lived in the Anka area for 20 years. I've read a lot about the economic glow, the bling of this Pratt Whitney-Raytheon package, and let me say, I know what it can mean to an area like ours in terms of jobs. I grew up in the Rust Belt. My father hunted, fished, we gardened and canned produce, so we'd have food whenever he was laid off work. They almost lost their house once. So I fully appreciate what a package like this can mean. However, I think residents have a right to answers to some of these concerns. There wasn't a lot of information about this before the full-blown announcement, and I have a question as to whether or not an environmental assessment was done and has an environmental impact statement been published, or will there be one? Will Pratt Whitney be held accountable to report accidents that will occur? Accidents happen, whether it's a leak, a spill, whatever, to the public? So we in the area know what's going on there. Will they be accountable for remediating where accidents have taken place? And will they be accountable to compensate for any harm to people or property? Another issue I hadn't thought of until I watched tonight's hearing was noise pollution. The person who called in at the beginning for the general comments talked about noise pollution here in Anka. I hear that noise too. I didn't know what it was, but that's another thing to consider. The other thing I'm worried about is that Pratt Whitney will close this plant as they have others to bring this plant here, lay people off, maybe not for decades, but their product will eventually become obsolete. And when they can't retool the plant for the newer technology, they'll relocate to rebuild. Okay, so will Pratt Whitney be held accountable to clean this site? Or are we going to have another CTS superfund issue to deal with? My concerns about this are based from my work in the Department of Navy's Base Closure Office during the 1990s. It was the BRAC, Base Realignment and Closure Rounds. Please look it up. I've seen firsthand the environmental damage done by and the associated illnesses from this of the military industrial complex. In closing, I just want to ask that you please don't let the glitz from this package blind you. We must insist on compliance with safeguards to protect our future environmental health and people, and please consider that before you award the incentives package. Thank you.
Rachel, you are live now.
Okay. Hello, my name is Rachel Bliss. I live in Asheville. My heart is heavy as I comment on proposed incentives to Raytheon Technologies and Pratt Whitney while we all should be focused exclusively on the pandemic right now. When I moved here in 2008, Asheville and this region formed an oasis in a desert of company towns around it, all dependent on multinational corporations. But Asheville is different, proudly made up of small businesses. It was considered to be one of the happiest cities in the world. Then I heard about CTS. It left our region, leaving a superfund site. That's what big corporations are good at, and mostly have something to do with the Defense Department, which pays war profiteers to overbuild bombers and weapons driven by our unrealistic fears. Today, our commission proposes $27 million in incentives, mostly property tax abatements, to a Fortune 50 company for 10 years. That's 10 years that the company, the county loses $2.6 million to spend on local needs. What if that money went into one Buncombe instead, forgiving property taxes on small businesses that have given their everything for a dream of building community? Do you know why other regions envy Asheville? Because of its creative commons. But Raytheon wants to recruit workers here who aren't unionized. In response, I say, then let Raytheon pay their own way, like our artists. I used to live in a company town in Asheville beginning in 1973. I asked my husband if we really wanted to live there. All I could see were smokestacks and a filthy, stinking river, which I later discovered within it was an island where the Cherokees and settlers signed the peace treaty. But over time, most of that land was taken by Eastman Kodak, which a century earlier had gone south and taken advantage of the people. One of the strategic plans for 2019 was to have a transparent government. I see no transparency in this deal. I know they were warned about political activists, and we are here to be political activists. In New York, they were able to get Amazon to change their mind, and that is something that we need to do here because you're spending our money without our consent. Thank you.
Jenny, you're live.
My name is Jimmy Andry, and I live in downtown Asheville. Making our county a hub for the manufacture of tools used for lethal, violent means, known to have cost the lives of hundreds of thousands of innocent people across the world, is absolutely unacceptable. As an American taxpayer, I already share a portion of my wages with Raytheon's $100 billion conglomerate, including Pratt Whitney. I vehemently oppose sharing my home with them too. Why does it seem as though personal integrity and moral clarity preclude serving in a position of leadership? We can choose to follow along with the status quo, no matter how blood-soaked, unhealthy, and unsustainable it becomes, or we can question it and put all of our resources, energy, and brilliance into restructuring it by reimagining what is possible in terms of economic viability, social responsibility, and environmental benefit. We are at a pivotal moment as humans, and a profound yet simple question must be answered. Will we choose the path of minimizing overall harm or maximizing it? The people of Asheville have spent months calling for an end to violence toward and reparations for Asheville's BIPOC community, and we have seen both county and city leadership push these discussions down the road, insist that creativity is actually what is needed, and flat-out reject these demands. Allowing such a nefarious industry as war tool manufacturing in our city, and specifically a conglomerate responsible for the deaths of hundreds of thousands of BIPOC human beings across the world, is an absolute slap in the face to the BIPOC residents of Asheville, as well as their allies and those who oppose this country's legacy of imperial violence. Those who approve this deal and you have masked its insidious nature behind a narrative of fuel planes and stuff and job creation must know that blood is on your hands. Our area definitely needs industries other than tourism, and we absolutely need those industries to provide living place jobs, but not all industries are created equal. Would there be no better industry to bring to Asheville? The people of Asheville demand a sustainable, green job now. Thank you.
You are live.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gerald Warehan. I've lived in West Asheville for seven years, and I've been the President of the Western North Carolina Chapter of Veterans for Peace for four years. You may at least be familiar with our chapter by our peace vigil held continuously every Tuesday afternoon at Pax Square since 2003. Veterans for Peace is an international organization chartered as nonprofit and nonpartisan, educational in nature, with our stated purpose including the following: to increase public awareness of the causes and costs of war; to restrain our governments from intervening in the internal affairs of other nations; to end the arms race; to abolish war as an instrument of national policy. True to our purpose, we oppose the Economic Development Agreement with Pratt Whitney, a division of Raytheon Technologies Corporation. Why? Well, it's exactly what we exist to do. And then here's an excerpt from just one of a plethora of available resources regarding Raytheon. As quoted in an article published May 22, 2020 by United for Peace and Justice, quote, "There is no better practitioner of the American genius for papering over wanton destruction and mayhem with comforting illusion than the Raytheon Company. But in the real world, Raytheon is an essential component of the largest war machine ever constructed. In the real world, Raytheon is emerging as one of the leading merchants of death of our time." Close quotes. A Pratt Whitney plant in Asheville may or may not be contributing to the war profiteer called Raytheon, but we will be relentless in pursuing the truth about that, as well as the role of the board in committing taxpayer money to facilitating Raytheon's part in wreaking mayhem around the world. In conclusion, will you at least protect the county and yourselves from legal, financial, and moral liability by delaying further action until all legal agreements are amended to stipulate that if parts for weapon systems are made in the plant, Raytheon and Pratt Whitney must refund all public assistance, and they must cease doing business in the county? With respect and in peace, I thank you.
Veronica, you're live.
Yes. Hi, my name's Veronica. I'm a resident of Asheville. While the community understands the need for economic development outside the tourist industry, incentivizing this manufacturing facility does not reflect what our community stands for. Instead of funding our community in ways that your voters have directly asked, you've decided to pull $27 million out of thin air at a time when you recently cut the budget of the Health Department. Did the money simply magically appear? A few months ago, you sat where you sit now and told us it didn't exist. You told us more was needed for an already bloated sheriff's budget while our health wasn't important enough. And yet, here we are with millions being offered in tax incentives. Instead of focusing on what is needed for our community right now, you're investing in a failing market that not only exports violence to other countries, but is one of the largest contributors to climate change in the world. We do not want to see our local government prioritize this short-sighted, deeply harmful project while failing to address long-term solutions for your residents. A photo, which you can find on the most recent article from the Asheville Blade, shows a man carrying a massacred child. The scene is shortly after one of Raytheon's products was used on civilians. The original photojournalist also found an interesting object among the rubble that day, a metal label with Raytheon's logo and the words "Made in Tucson, Arizona." How would council feel if a short time from now, among massacred children and civilians dying in the streets, nearby another photojournalist finds another label, but this time it says "Made in Asheville, North Carolina"? Remember, this company's loyalties lie with their shareholders, not with WNC, not with your voters, and not with the beautiful Blue Ridge Mountains. No matter how pretty their presentations try to spin their numbers, the term "green product" doesn't actually mean anything. Raytheon already has a plethora of affected sites. A simple Google search will reveal multiple sites around the U.S. that are still feeling the negative impact in their environment. Among them are LA, St. Petersburg, Boulder, Colorado, Mountain View, California. Do we want to join these sites on that list? If you want to create jobs, please, I beg of you, find another way to do it. Keep Asheville's name off the war machine and keep Raytheon out.
Caller, you are live. Victoria, you are live. Victoria, you are live.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, I had to mute my computer. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Victoria, and I'm calling today to speak on the Pratt Whitney development, which will be built by the river on Brevard Road, where I live. It is common It is common knowledge that the ecological effects of these military industrial plants are devastating. Many of them leave behind deadly chemicals and radioactive waste for decades after these plants are shut down. The impact of these chemicals is toxic, not only to the plants and wildlife, but to the air, water, and the people that live in the surrounding areas. Need I remind you that the most recent quality report for the French broad was deplorable? With outstanding levels of waste and triple the amount of E. coli than is acceptable, this plant would only add to that crisis that Buncombe County Government has failed to manage to this very day. And not only would this plant be bad for our local environment, it would be devastating to the people across the world that will fall victim to the weapons of war that will result from this project. Raytheon has a long track record of supplying weapons to Saudi Arabia, which has been at war with Yemen for a long time. Yemen is facing the largest hunger crisis we have seen in modern times, with nearly eighty percent of their people starving to death, falling prey to disease, and to the constant military assaults. By building this factory here in the Blue Ridge Mountains, we are staining this beautiful region with the blood of millions of people around the world. Our community has made it painstakingly clear that we want demilitarization, not just of our police, but of our government. We've also made it clear that the health of our environment is our top priority, bar none. And after the year we've had, it has become increasingly clear that we want protection for our BIPOC communities as well. Continuing with this development would be a huge mistake, and it would move us even further away from what our community needs. It would only further cause devastation to BIPOC people around the world and to the environment that we are committed to protecting. I will be the first to admit that we need new jobs in this area to help the community grow. But those jobs do not need to come from a manufacturer of weapons of war. Those jobs need to come from a commitment to a Green New Deal. We need green jobs here that will help us dig ourselves out of the climate crisis that we're in, not jobs that will continue to degrade our environment and our moral responsibility to the people that we share this planet with. We have a duty as citizens to protect the place we call home, and inviting Raytheon into our community will do the exact opposite. We have been asking Buncombe County to fund mutual aid, provide reparations, and defund the police, and have been continuously told there is no money for the community care. Yet, the county is giving five million dollars to build weapons of war? Clearly, the county's priorities are misplaced. Clearly, there is no concern for the people that call this place home. But instead, the concern is for the revenues from unethical companies. That needs to change now. So please, I'm asking you as a concerned citizen to reject Raytheon's proposal and to care for the community that you were elected to represent. Thank you. I hope you guys have a wonderful night. Thank you for listening to People's Comments.
Caller, will you use your program back?
Yep, got it.
And you are live.
Hello, my name is Melanie Noyes, and I'm a resident of West Asheville. I would like to preface that I am the daughter of a refugee. I can't believe that this plan formerly known as Project Ranger has been financially incentivized to bring this facility to our town when other needs of ours have not been met. It clearly does not represent our community because we don't support the war machine and we don't support Raytheon. Instead of funding our community in ways that we have directly asked for, you've decided to pull twenty-seven million dollars out of property tax refunds in support of an arms dealer. In the press release for this project, it is said that they want to manufacture these earfoils in hopes that the market rebounds sometime in the future. So instead of focusing on what is needed in our community right now, you're investing in what sounds to be a failing market that will not only help export violence to other countries, but aircraft, especially military aircraft, is one of the largest contributors to climate change in the world. And it looks like a third of these parts would be going to the military? There are serious implications here. Raytheon has had a role in more than one hundred thousand Yemen deaths since two thousand and fifteen through sales with Saudi Arabia, which many are calling a genocide. Even if a third of the parts coming out of this facility were to be used for war in a five-year span of time, that means parts coming out of these beautiful mountains play a role in thirty thousand deaths, all because you think a few hundred jobs in Buncombe County is worth more than tens of thousands of lives somewhere else. Has there even been an environmental impact report on the bridge? Speaking of saving lives, the county has in the last few months taken away COVID testing sites, which has an impact on whether or not people can safely mitigate risk during a pandemic. How many lives do you think this has compromised? You have also failed to deliver on reparations for our Black community, which succeeded in getting national attention, but failed to be funded by local government, who we now know can pull millions of dollars out of thin air for weapons of war. How exactly are you planning to spend these tax revenue from this project anyway? Please consider that this cannot be treated like any other industry. It's not tourism, it's not a brewery, it's not real estate. Don't be so dense as to believe that this revenue would be worth the consequences in another part of the world that you or I may never have to deal with. Don't let our town contribute to creating more refugees in any way, shape, or form. Incentivize something that has a positive social environmental impact. At the very least, something that doesn't kill people. You must find another way to create jobs and lift our community. Otherwise, we'll be held accountable. We look forward to seeing you shut this project down before it even starts.
Erin, you are live.
Hello, I'm calling tonight to urge the council to reconsider the Pratt and Whitney Economic Development Agreement. I think it is absolutely shameful that y'all are proposing to give twenty-seven million dollars to a military industrial company at a time when there is still a pandemic and economic distress raging through our communities. Like, you do realize what companies you're proposing giving twenty-seven million dollars to, right? Pratt and Whitney is a subsidiary of the bloodstained arms dealers Raytheon Technologies. These are companies that for decades have built some of the most sophisticated instruments of human misery for profit. Pratt and Whitney have made twelve to twenty billion dollars per year for the last decade, partly by manufacturing military-grade jet parts and servicing military jet engines for the U.S. Imperial War Machine. As for P&amp;W's parent company, Raytheon, I'm pretty sure they just have a howling void and a desire for profit where their moral compass should be. The latest scam the ghouls at Raytheon have been running is lobbying the government to allow them to sell weapons to Saudi Arabia to commit what some would rightfully call a genocide in Yemen. The U.S. has supplied this terroristic regime with arms deals, intelligence, and even mid-air refueling for Saudi aircraft, which are probably powered by a P&amp;W jet engine. Raytheon's bombs have been used against hospitals, schools, and funerals. For producing these tools of death, the fine folks at Raytheon have received nearly two billion dollars. And as of twenty twenty, Raytheon is worth nearly a hundred billion dollars. And near as I can tell, one of Raytheon's driving reasons for coming to the South is our lower labor costs. So quite frankly, it is absurd to me that y'all would even consider giving a single penny to these ghoulish corporations. Now, I think I hear some of y'all reasoning. But Erin, there's going to be millions in development and eight hundred good-paying jobs. The question I would ask is, is it worth it? Is eight hundred good-paying jobs worth the moral stain of causing death and misery for thousands in the country most Americans couldn't point to on a map? Would you be able to sleep at night knowing that you enabled these death profiteers? But fine, even if Raytheon is dead set on building a factory here, who am I but one trans woman? I can't stop them. I can, however, beg and plead with the Commissioners to consider the moral cost and to not give Raytheon any money. Please use the money to fight the pandemic or directly invest it in our communities. Please do not give any money to these death merchants. They already have enough bloodstained currency of their own. Thank you. Please do not give money to these corporations.
Caller, you're live.
Hello, my name is Britt, and I am in Leicester. I just have a list of thoughts and notes regarding the PW Economic Development Plan. It's incomplete and in no particular order. Reparations, crimes against humanity like legal slavery, imagination as abolition, climate catastrophe, marginalization, ecocide, priorities. Environmental assessment, remediation slash compensation, noise pollutions, Lockheed Martin. I vote against non-unionized, twenty thousand layoffs, fourteen years? Step into the future, Paris Agreement, social services, pandemic crisis, "Made in Asheville", green rocket men. What input was given? What time was given for the people to give input before this point? The clearest connection of Raytheon to that war is the billions of dollars in arms sales Raytheon makes to Saudi Arabia, including its guided pave-way bombs that have been used against civilian targets and civilian infrastructure in Yemen. Almost five percent of Raytheon's total revenue comes from weaponry sales just to the Saudis. Never mind that it sells dozens of other, sells to dozens of other countries. Apparently, that's about twenty-five to thirty percent in military, in the military side of their budget. The F-135 engine program is going to mean, is going to remain as the core and anchor of Pratt and Whitney's military aviation business for a long time to come. The sixth-generation engine for combat aircrafts under the AETP program led by Pratt and Whitney and GE Aviation will be the game changer. Growth engine propelling the next generation fighter aircraft programs. Leaf season, B-21 bomber, the Pratt and Whitney Division of United Technologies will build the engines. And BAE Systems, a global defense firm based primarily in the U.K. and the United States, is a major subcontractor. Depressed airline industry? What is the environmental impact of investing in combat engines versus investing in Green New Deal-type jobs? I have no doubt of the benefits of, benefits and jobs this endeavor would produce, but I ask you, Commissioners, what is the human cost? Homelessness, so proud, isn't this greed? Beer and rocket tourism? Why not Green New Deal jobs? Our little mountain rocket men? I'm sure the engineers have worked out how many families abroad will suffer for every combat engine that is made here in Buncombe County. A better world is possible. Doesn't the U.S. have enough blood on its hands? The clearest connection of Raytheon to that war is the billions of dollars in arms sales Raytheon makes to Saudi Arabia, including its guided pave-way bombs that have been used against civilian targets. And Raytheon is actually involved in the formation of U.S. policies supporting the war in Yemen. Mark Esper, our present Secretary of Defense, was Raytheon. So this is like Trump's thing? Trump wants more nuclear stuff, so he wants more of these like B-21 bombers, up to a billion dollars each, about a hundred billion total. So I think a better world is possible, don't you? Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
Hi there, my name is David Pudlow. I live in North Asheville, and I'm asking, obviously, that you cancel the Pratt and Whitney proposal subsidiary of Raytheon. I think it's been pretty clear. There've been a lot of callers being very clear on who Pratt and Whitney is, who they are owned by, what they do, who they bomb. And I think you all knew that. I think Dan Fields knows that. I think everyone on the stage knows how many people are killed by Raytheon and their weapons, like Saudi Arabia. What's interesting to me, I mean, it's clear, you know, Dan, you noted how quiet he was when he said, oh, and yeah, also the twenty, thirty, twenty, thirty percent is military budget. We know that it's incredibly unpopular, and yet you still are trying to try and push this through. I just want you to just realize that, like, so Raytheon has an entire department of people making six figures to convince you, local, county, and state governments, that this is a good idea, that this is just roses and butterflies and a whole bunch of money that's not worth selling our souls for sixty-eight K a year. We're gonna have, I don't want blood on my hands, you don't want blood on your hands. I don't wish that on any of you. So obviously, I'm asking that you cancel this. There are plenty of other industries that you could be pushing for. If the Billmore Dynasty wants to give them land, and Pratt and Whitney wants to go and do it, do, go do this business, that's fine. We just should not be giving them any of our taxpayer money, not a single cent. Not if they make jobs, doesn't matter. Not if they spout some clear lies about it's a green company because they like, make, you know, fly ten fewer miles on their routes for their civilian things. We're not worried about, you know, a ten percent drop in a bucket of like, how many gazillion miles they end up flying in those jet fuel burners. This is clearly, this is, this will directly lead to the deaths. People have already told you in this call how many deaths this will lead to. So I'm wishing that, I don't want you to have that on your hands, that to have your, you have that on your conscience. I'm asking you to cancel this, at least postpone it. Jasmine, I met you at the polls. You seem like you have a good head on your shoulders, I know. I presume you're gonna be voting no. Ronnie Newman, you used to be an environmental advocate. It's really disappointing to hear you can't be in this. And the rest of you, I don't know much about the rest of you, honestly. Heard some of you talk about faith in some of the earlier parts of this meeting. It's pretty clear, like, this is one of those cases, what would Jesus do? It's pretty, pretty clear, he would not be collaborating with arms dealers and dealing with murder. He would be chasing the people who are doing that out of the temple. Thank you.
Caller, you're live.
Hi, my name is Paul, and I'm in Asheville. Good evening. In April of twenty eighteen, Abdou Shalai went to his niece's wedding in Yemen along with over a hundred other friends and members of his family. After the wedding ceremony, with everyone joyous and dancing together, Shalai explained that, quote, "Everything fell down over our heads. I thought I was on fire. I was covered with dust. I tried to run, but I kept falling." A member of the local council who heard the blast immediately came over to the wedding site and described what he saw. Quote, "I couldn't recognize them at all because of the dark and the bodies were completely burned. The last one I saw was a guy, cut into two, part over a tree and the rest hanging from it. I felt so sick when I saw that scene. I even felt that my feet can't hold me, and I fell. When I was searching and digging in the rubble, I heard the weeping of the families who are grieving for their people, who they don't know if they are alive or dead. On that night, eleven children ranging from seven to fifteen years old and ten adults were killed, and another forty-eight children and forty-nine adults were injured. To date, a reason for the attack has not been given, and the nearest military target was a checkpoint over an hour's drive from the site of the attack. Twenty-one innocent civilians were killed and ninety-seven were injured by a five-hundred-pound GBU-12 Pave Way Two guided bomb, which is produced by Raytheon, Pratt and Whitney's parent company. That was delivered via an F-35 Lightning II, whose F-135 engine is produced by Pratt and Whitney. The engine of a similar aircraft sending a missile to murder dozens of innocent civilians could be built in our very own backyard. Let that sink in, that there could be another wedding in Yemen, another fighter aircraft carrying a missile, another twenty-one innocent civilians murdered, and ninety-seven more injured with an engine that is only functioning because you, the Buncombe County Commissioners, thought it would be a good idea to root Raytheon to town with a twenty-seven million dollar tax break. Think about it. Instead of condemning the slaughter of innocent civilians by Raytheon Technologies in Yemen and so many other countries, you want to give them money to facilitate more shocking, illegal, inhumane, and devastating acts worldwide? Frankly, today, I'm ashamed to be a resident of this county. But it also doesn't have to be this way.
Thirty seconds?
You can act with an eye towards a peaceful future, one in which folks in Buncombe County can pursue jobs and clean energy via a new wind project, a new solar field, investment in small businesses, or any other of a number of career paths that don't force those looking for jobs to participate in a truly horrific industry. City Commissioners, you're better than this. We're better than this. You don't actually want to bring a company to town that all that forces the next generation of our workforce to participate in an industry responsible for so much death and destruction. Please listen to your heart and vote no.
Miranda, you're live.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Miranda Norland. I live in Weverell. I've lived here since I was three, grew up here. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for your all's time. I know there are a lot of comments, and I appreciate you listening to all of them. And I am simultaneously disappointed that it seems like this has been in the works for a really long time, and the public is only just now hearing it and about it, and only just now getting to have their voices heard. I'd also like to thank so many of the callers who have spoken so passionately and eloquently and thoughtfully before me for your research, your effort, and your care for this community. I am also opposed to the Pratt and Whitney deal, in part, as many folks have said, because of the business that they are part of because of their affiliations with Raytheon. But for me, really particularly, why do you have an issue with us using taxpayer money to support and incentivize their development here as a massive, multi, like, global corporation versus using that money, as others have pointed out, to support local companies, to strengthen our infrastructure, our healthcare, our education system, and as many other folks have said, incentivizing and returning taxes to Black-owned businesses as reparations or supporting more- as reparations or supporting more green industries? So those are my feelings on this issue particularly. But I wanted to use the rest of my time just to give y'all a breather, because there are a lot of words coming at you, a lot of information, a lot of feelings. And I think it's really difficult for us as human beings to just absorb all of that at once. So I'd like to invite you to settle yourselves in your seats, to stretch the parts of you that have been sitting for a really long time, to take a deep breath, let your shoulders relax, let all of this tension release. And then if you're people of faith, to pray with me. Beloved God, who is love, be with these commissioners here as they hear the voice of their people and make decisions for our community. And help us remember that what you have told us what is good and what does the Lord require of you but to do justice and to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God. Thank you, everybody.
We are getting the next caller on the line. One moment, please. Where are you?
Scott Thompson, I'm calling.
Mrs. Calloway? You are our next caller for public input. I'm going to make you live right now. Your three minutes has started.
Oh geez, three minutes. All right, cool. I wanted to say that, you know, I've been living in Asheville for a few years now and I love the city and, but getting more involved with sort of like the inequalities that people experience in communities all over Asheville and right now all over the world unfortunately, has got me worried about how our city council has once again like tabled the reparations talk. I'm extremely disappointed in Asheville and I want to see us be a more progressive unified front and an example for the rest of the United States right now, that like communities can be unified and people can be given a fair shot. But like, the, ah, the proposal to fund millions of dollars to a weapons manufacturer and to allow them to like build a manufacturing company in Asheville is atrocious. I can't believe that that's where we're at still. Like, the world is literally falling apart. And you guys are a group of adults who I feel are, you know, like chosen to represent the needs of the community. Like, this is not what the world needs, especially on such a small scale. And so, like, I'm hopeful that you guys can make the right decisions, but I really hope that this one isn't it. Like, please, don't just think about the money and think about people's lives and like the kids that those bombs are gonna be dropped on. Just, this is so important. This is, this is such a big moment to set an example on a really big stage, to tell people that like this is not the route that we're gonna take as a city and as a community.
30 seconds?
Thanks. And with that, I appreciate you for listening and I will pass to the next person.
We have four more callers. Elsa, you're live.
Hi, my name is Elsa Enstrom and I live in Arden. And I was told about this just a few days ago and I was honestly really surprised that it hasn't been in the news more. And I feel like that has been on purpose and I, I don't know if it has been the city government who's been responsible for that or the companies who have been, you know, interested in building here, but I thought that was really scary, that, you know, not a lot of people know that this is happening and even those of us who pay really close attention, some of us didn't realize it was happening. And that's extremely troubling. I, I have a hard time thinking of where to begin with what's wrong with this proposal. You know, currently in this world, we have so much violence going on and so much money going into violence, when we are also sitting on the literal brink of extinction of our race. And, you know, we could, we could be putting so many resources into preservation, into vulnerable communities, into climate research, into green jobs, and instead we're looking at putting more revenue into something like this, something that, I mean, a literal war machine that is built for nothing other than to destroy people's lives. I would like to think that Asheville as a community is better than that. That's part of what attracted me to this community 10-plus years ago when I originally came here for college. And I know that the people here as a whole do not support violence, especially needless violence, like what's going on in the Middle East on many fronts and in other places across the world. And I think that you guys really should look at yourselves and look at your conscience to understand why you're even entertaining this plan. I think it says a lot about where we are as a species and I think it's very sad. We have a chance here to really make big difference in the world. Where we are right now is going to decide so much. So please do the right thing. Don't put this through. You know, choose better ways to spend our money and our time and choose to be better people. Thank you.
Lori, you are live.
My name is Lori Churman and I am speaking as a local volunteer with World Beyond War to oppose the 27 million in county incentives for the plant Pratt &amp; Whitney plant for jet engine parts. We can't afford to repeat the CTS of Asheville plant super fund site that emitted dangerous levels of carcinogens for over 30 years. Pratt &amp; Whitney at North Haven, Connecticut released 5.4 million pounds of toxic chemicals while its West Palm Beach Florida plant generated 47 toxic waste sites. What are the required precautions to prevent toxic leaks and accidents? Requirements for immediate public reporting of any spills or contamination, provisions for full remediation, and requirements for compensation to the county and to any people harmed? Pratt &amp; Whitney is a part of Raytheon Technologies, the third largest weapons manufacturers in the world, which has a record of profiting in the billions from selling fighter jets to Saudi Arabia that in turn has terrorized for years the country of Yemen, which has suffered, suffered over 16,000 air raids, killing civilians and causing famine. Pratt &amp; Whitney will likely be building parts for engines on F-35 and military fighter aircraft that will be sold to countries like Saudi Arabia, United Arab Emirates and Israel that commit human rights abuses. And this still was kept secret with the environmental hearing being canceled in March. This plant was announced only on October 22nd and while these 27 million in incentives were only revealed on November 5th. The residents of Buncombe County deserve to be proffered of these plants. The decision regarding incentives should be postponed until citizens have adequate time to study the ramifications. The Pratt &amp; Whitney Raytheon business model is one of making a killing in terms of profits by making a killing in terms of war bombings and death. They know if the jet engines that are going to be built are for civilian or military use. And so should the residents of Buncombe County. We ask for our county elected representatives to act with all due precaution in this decision regarding incentives, given the serious long-term ramifications at stake and to delay this decision to allow for full informed citizen input. Thank you.
Andrew, you're live.
Perfect. Hello, my name is Andrew. I'm a resident of West Asheville. I'm calling to talk about the Pratt &amp; Whitney Economic Development Plan formerly called Project Ranger. I and many other folks in the community are deeply concerned about this plan. We understand the difference between, or the need to kind of expand beyond the tourist industry, but at the same time, me and many of my people do not support the war machine and we do not support Raytheon. We have asked over the months, past months, to, to be supported, right, as a community in ways that you have not, ways that you have not given, right? So you're pulling out these $27 million in property tax refunds focusing on these components in aircraft that are gonna drop bombs and create violence, right? And, uh, uh, the, we as a community, Asheville does not stand for this. You promised something like reparations and we don't invest, we get that pushed off of the agenda. I think that when I, when I, when I think about the idea of a corporation like Raytheon being involved in Asheville and Asheville community, I'm deeply appalled frankly and I'm deeply ashamed that our elected representatives, that our people in power would represent us in this way. This is absolutely not who we are in any way, right? We have protests over the summer that get national attention because we use weapons of violence against our own citizens and we're gonna go and we're gonna create more of these weapons in our own neighborhood, right? The people right now do not trust local government and the idea that we would give this corporation a space, this land, and that in giving that space and land somehow this would create jobs or opportunities for the people in Asheville, I think is complete garbage. And in order to build trust between the individuals in this community and the people who are helping to run and manage this community, there's a lot, a lot of work to be done. If, if, if you want to create these jobs, find another way to do it or we as a people will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Matilda, you are live.
Hi, my name is Matilda. I live in Asheville. I noticed you all reading a statement tonight about Buncombe County being a good place for business. What I want to know is when you will finally realize that being a good place for people is far more important than pleasing business owners, looking to exploit and even murder to make a profit? My comment is not just about your absurd courting of a multibillion dollar weapons manufacturer, but about your insistence on pleasing corporations, including nine hotel conglomerates, to hold licensing rights to nearly 60 hotels in the county during a pandemic, exploiting the labor of thousands of low-paid workers who lack union contracts. Speaking of which, Raytheon hasn't just arrived out of thin air to provide some glorious jobs. Raytheon is fresh off of laying off hundreds of workers in Massachusetts. And now they have arrived in North Carolina, a right-to-work state, to fill the corporations already overflowing in $100 billion coffers. What does it mean to you to actively court Pratt &amp; Whitney, whose parent company is Raytheon, whose bombs have killed doctors, teachers, parents and children in countries such as Yemen? You talk about adoption. You don't actually care about children if you approve these funds. I imagine it means as little to you as your lax health standards and making cuts to the testing during a pandemic that has killed 250,000 people here in the US, this country. I imagine it means as little to you as standing by the titans of tourism despite their records of harming workers, local infrastructure, the environment during a climate emergency and the tens of thousands of black and brown locals still waiting on reparations and disproportionately affected by gentrification. You must reject subsidies for Raytheon. It is one of the world's worst polluters in its own right and may this be the start of a commitment to centering people and economic development instead of listening to murderers, leeches and polliers for atrocious neighbors and horrible housing. You will be held accountable for your lapses. You will be held accountable for your intentional disregard.
30 seconds? Our final caller. Caller, you're live.
Hi, my name is Maya and I live in Asheville. I'm just gonna keep it simple and say, I never want to hear again that there is not enough money to fund regional public transportation or public schools or COVID testing sites. I just, $27 million to an evil, warm-hungering corporation of our tax money? I make, I don't make a living wage and I have to pay tax dollars and this is, this is what it's going to? Not, not schools, not teachers, not public transportation? I mean, can you imagine how much economic mobility that would create in town if we had a real usable public transportation system? I just, we need green jobs. We need a Green New Deal for Buncombe County, renewable energy jobs, good paying jobs. And it's just become so clear that there is money for programs that would help actual people who live here, not just harm us in our environment. So I'll leave it at this because I'm the last caller. I just want to remind you that every single caller here votes. So, you know, and we're independent voters in this, in this state. Please listen to us because we don't want this and we elected you. Thank you.
Does that conclude all the folks who have signed up to speak during public comment? Okay. All right. I want to thank everyone who took time to share their perspectives during the public hearing this evening. I know a lot of folks waited for their turn and we appreciate that. So thank you. And I want to thank all the county staff who helped facilitate that. This is, it is a difficult time to hold these kind of public forums. We're trying to approach these processes in ways that keep people as safe as possible. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation and taking time to, to share their perspective on this important issue. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on this issue at 8:15 PM and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission for, if there's other questions, and then at some point we'll want to have a motion. So, but at this point, let's, let's see if there's any other questions or comments that commissioners would like to, to share. I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. So, you know, a friend of mine wrote me an email about this project and this proposal. A close friend of mine who I like a lot, we share a lot of political perspectives on issues facing our community and our state and our country. And he expressed a lot of the concerns that we heard from, from many of the folks who took time to comment during public, the public hearing. And I've, I wrote him a response where I tried to sort of summarize some of my thoughts around these questions. So I think I'd like to just read part of that because I think it touches on some of the issues that some folks raised during the public hearing this evening. So, so just take a moment. So I said, because, you know, I think that the two, the two really overarching concerns I hear from a lot of folks about this is that the United States spends more money than we should on national defense and military-related purposes. And more of those funds should be spent on other national priorities like healthcare, education, climate protection, and other priorities. The other concern I think we heard a lot from folks tonight is that the United States' foreign policy sometimes results us in, in our country getting involved in wars and conflicts that are unjustified and that hurt a lot of people. So I, I agree with both of those concerns. I think our country spends more money than we should on the military national defense. I think we should spend less and I think we should redirect it to other needs. And, and I think our country has, has, has gotten involved and is involved in different conflicts around the world that we should have never gotten involved in. So, but let me just read a bit more about this. So I said, I agree with your fundamental concern that our country invests far too much of our national funds in the military. I support reducing the amount of funds our country spends on the military so we can invest in other critical needs. I agree that many of our country's foreign policy decisions have had terrible results, results around the world. We fought wars we shouldn't have been involved in and often supported corrupt governments for the sake of military alliances. Although I think we have a similar perspective about reducing spending on the military and seeking to avoid unjust military operations, my question is whether the location of this new aerospace manufacturing facility will have any impact, one way or the other, on any of those important foreign policy questions. I've thought about this question a good deal and ultimately I believe the location of this facility, whether it would be in North Carolina, Tennessee, Alabama, or some other location, does not have any bearing on how our country handles such important foreign policy concerns. These types of decisions are made by the president and his administration and the United States Congress. These are not decisions that are made by county commissions. If I thought the decisions made by our local government would have a direct bearing on those issues, I would think about it differently. Of course, part of our consideration also has to be how it will affect the lives of our constituents in our community. Beyond my concerns about the environment and climate, the single biggest concern I have about the future of the Asheville area and Buncombe County is that our community is changing into a place where only the wealthy are able to make a decent life for themselves. Poor people and the working poor are trapped in a service-oriented economy where wages are low, but the cost of living is high. If we really care about creating economic mobility for people and communities that have been stuck in our economy, in many cases for generations, creating a more diversified economy is essential. With this project, we plan to partner with AB Tech Community College to create a training program for local residents that will prepare them to work in the aerospace industry. The majority of the manufacturing in this sector is civilian rather than military-related. With over 800 jobs that will pay on average 40% more than the average wages in Buncombe County, our averages are below the state and national average. The positive impacts this will have on many people's lives is very significant. I've heard some people say they support more manufacturing in a more diversified economy, but they don't support this project. So why don't we instead choose a different company to create these jobs doing something different? Unfortunately, there is not a long list of many different manufacturing companies who all want to locate in western North Carolina and that we have the option of simply choosing between them. I wish that were the case. Unfortunately, it's not our reality. For a project like this, it's more of a binary decision. Either this project will locate here or it will locate somewhere else. There is not some other company that will build a similar manufacturing facility in this location if they do not. There's more, but I think that summarizes some of the key, my thoughts and some of the similar concerns I've heard from a friend of mine who took time to send us an email. So I just wanted to have a chance to share those perspectives. I think the questions that folks are raising are important and valid, but my sense is that they are largely issues that we have to resolve as a country and, and we have elected officials to, who make those decisions, but it's largely not, they're largely not made at the local government level. So anyway, I appreciate the chance to share a few of those thoughts. Who would like to?
No one else. Got any comment?
Go ahead.
I don't have a comment. I'd like just make a motion for, for the economic development between Pratt and Whitney and Buncombe County.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the economic development agreement as outlined in the staff report.
I second the motion.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion or?
I'll make, I'll make a few comments. One, Chairman, I appreciate you getting, you know, reading what you read. It was uncomfortable for you to do that, but you needed to do that and I appreciate you doing it. I believe it came from, from a good place. This conversation has been going on for, for a while. I believe that the, the Pratt and Whitney brings generational jobs to Buncombe County. I also wanted to mention, it's been plenty said about, about Pratt and Whitney and some of the other things, but I, I don't want the night to go without mentioning the Cecil's and, you know, the contribution and the property that's over there. And, you know, it's a lot of property and, and there's just not many places like that in Buncombe County where someone.
There are a few, yeah.
Where, where a, a manufacturer of this size can locate. And, and I, and I think it's, it's very unusual that we got the call for them to come and locate in, in Buncombe County. And I don't have to agree with everything that a manufacturer may or may not do, particularly because I do not control their, their, what goes on with them inside of their company. But what I can control is, you know, trying to make it better for people to live here and not move, and not move away and never come back. I mean, we've got kids that go to school and they go and they go to work for other companies and they, they never have the opportunity to come back to Buncombe County because there aren't these type of paying jobs in Buncombe County. Well, now they have an opportunity to make that choice to, to, to come back if they want to, or to stay here, go to AB Tech, you know, and, and locate with a company, you know, like this. I think that as GE came here, as Pratt and Whitney come here, is coming here, I believe that other smaller companies are going to, going to come as a result of it. And I think ultimately it'll be a big, good decision. Is it an easy decision? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. When you're dealing with this kind of, kind of money, one of the things that we make clear is I don't like doing any incentives, period. I've never liked doing them. I wish that we didn't do them across the country at all, if you want my personal preference. But that is not the world that we're, we're in. So in, in Buncombe County, what you have heard is that the, the tax money, not the residual money that people earn, their tax money, has to cash flow this. And in this one, it does. And so, and I too am grateful for all the comments. I mean, that's one of the great things about government is you can call, you can provide the information, you can give the information, you can speak your piece and, and I'm thankful to have been a process, a part of that process. I'll hush.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'll just join with a few brief comments and appreciate what you have, both have said, both, that resonates a lot. And, you know, as is the nature of the economic development projects, there's a lot of dialogue and discussion that goes on, in this case 15 months' worth.
That's right.
About physical questions, very practical questions and everything in between. So I'll start by talking about some of the reasons that I support this and will be voting for this. You know, and this is a topic I talk about a lot, but I think folks know that about 46% of children in our community live in poverty or low-income homes. And every which way you think about how we can tackle that problem and move the needle on that involves wealth creation strategies, how we help people have opportunities to earn and to create the lives that they deserve. And we do that in a lot of different ways and I'm really proud of the range of ways that we are trying to move that needle and help people move that needle in their own lives. And some of those are social programs around early child education, but a big part of it is about economic development. And I think this project brings into our community a new scale and scope of project that we haven't been presented with before. There have been some big projects that predated my time here, but, but nothing quite this big. And it complements the $10 million that we're investing in solar panels, a contract that went to a local company and will create a lot of local green jobs. It complements the projects I love when, when Clark comes up here and, and we meet a local business owner who's employing 25, 30 people and they're looking at an expansion. And I think we have to think about all of those kinds of projects when we think about economic development. I'm a minister by training and I am taught the gospel of peace. And so these words are words I take seriously that we heard from our community members tonight. And this vote's one I've prayed a lot about, as I do our most important votes. And I've found a way to support this because I think of the impact it will have in our community, but I also echo the concerns about war and the concerns about defense spending. And, and those are beliefs and convictions I'm always ready to talk about and think we need to talk about. And I think that part of what Pratt and Whitney being here and being a part of our community is this is a community where we, we don't always agree, but we stay at the table together. And I, and I want to welcome you all to that table and I also want to welcome you to a community where we're going to have public comment like this and we're going to find a way forward together. So I'll, I'll conclude my remarks with that. Thank you.
I want to echo as well what my colleagues have said. I think one of the things that makes this such a great country and a great county to live in is democracy and that folks do have the opportunity to have their voices heard in forums like this. So I really do appreciate the folks this evening who have taken the time to participate in our meeting this evening and spend well over an hour waiting for some of them for their turn to speak. Again, echoing exactly the same things, I mean, these are certainly things that we considered over that incredibly long process, but I do want to share with you all this evening the top reasons why I am choosing to support this. And we continue to hear that our community needs to diversify the types of jobs it has, the types of industries that we have. This is one of the ways that we can do that through advanced manufacturing. I do think in some ways, because the wages are well above what is the norm here in Buncombe County, it is going to force other employers to step up and look at how much they are paying those who are already living and working here. And I think that is a point that cannot be forgotten, particularly as we look at what our goals are for Buncombe County through 2025, and that's increasing the median average wages. By bringing in Pratt and Whitney with these incredible wages, folks are going to have to step up or they're going to lose their employers to Pratt and Whitney. Y'all may be okay with that. The second piece of that is this really is going to put a lot, new value on the importance of community colleges and particularly AB Tech. Often, as you all know, I do work at AB Tech, and there can be a community stigma about a degree from a community college, a two-year degree, a certification. And I think because of what Pratt and Whitney is bringing here along with those wages, it starts to place a new emphasis and a new respect on community college education. And I hope that our community will value what that brings and the role that AB Tech plays in our community in terms of job training and wages. And the last piece that I want to say is, we know while Commissioner Beach Ferrara spoke about early childhood and the impact that this has, it also can potentially have an impact on people becoming homeowners. They are going to earn higher wages, which will allow them hopefully to save additional funds so that they can purchase that home. And I think that is really important in our community as well. We want people to earn those wages so that they can afford to be a homeowner should they choose to. And I am really excited about this. And the last thing I'll say is having the opportunity to ask questions, I think Pratt and Whitney wants to come here and really contribute to our community in a philanthropic way and hear what the challenges we face in Buncombe County, the organizations who are working to addressing those social challenges that we have. And I am really excited that they are opening, willing to hear those conversations and work towards being a part of the solutions in our community philanthropically.
I, I too plan to, I will vote for the resolution. And commissioners, I purposely waited to be one of the last ones for the simple reason I've got more gray hair than all of you and I think I'm the oldest here. But I've seen Asheville come from a textile town to now. In 40 years of banking, one of the concerns I've had after retiring is that we needed a stimulus in this community or we need a shot in the arm, something that would make a generational change, that would pull us out of the 19th and 20th century into the 21st century. Because when you look at, we've done a great job when you look at tourism and getting our arms around that. But in doing that, we also need to up the game here as far as when you look at poverty in Buncombe County. You know, I think everybody in Raleigh thinks that we're all millionaires up here, but we do have poor people who live in Buncombe County. And when you look, I spent eight years on the city school board here. When you look at the disparity and the gap that we have, racial gap is one of the largest, not only in the state, but in the country. But we've got to do more to increase the quality of life in Asheville. And great, this is a great place to live in. I've been here all my life, other than the Navy during Vietnam and when I was in college. But we've got to make the changes and I agree with what the people have said. You know, I'm a Vietnam veteran. I survived the 60s. You know, I left picket line one day and I was on active duty in the Navy two weeks later after I graduated from college. But we have got, and I agree, Brownie, with everything you've said and all of the commissioners. And like all of you, I've wrestled with this, you know, but, and I waited against what's going to be best for our community. What's going to be the best for my, for your kids, my daughters who live here now, my grandkids? And what, four of us here are grandfathers? No, yeah, right. But this is what it takes and unfortunately, you know, I hear where a lot of the people are coming from and I agree with what they're saying in some respects. But we've got to weigh the advantages against the disadvantages. And sure, you look at the $27 million in incentive, but look at what we get back in return. And if people will look at the incentive agreement, they will see that. And I- And I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a win-win for all of us, and when you talk about companies we've had in the past, uh, that left an environmental mess here, when I look at the way Pratt and Whitney runs your operations and what, how you protect the environment, I don't think this is a different day and time now.
Different time.
It won't be, we don't have those problems. Uh, so I will be voting for it and welcoming all of you from Pratt and Whitney and our community. We look forward to working with you.
Any, any other comments?
I, I don't think I could say anything other than, that's already been said that I, that I agree with. Um, the opportunity to ask some questions privately and to know that, that, you know, we did ask some of these tough questions before we just...
Right.
And one of the things that I just want the people to realize is that this, these incentives are based on performance.
Right.
So it doesn't mean that we're just, we're just handing out, it's, they've got to meet certain parameters before they even get this, and if they don't meet those, they, they do not get the incentive. So I'm going to be supporting this. Um, I, I agree, we've got to, um, the, the, the way these wages will come in and help people buy homes and, and help folks, that's, that's, it's a pretty good thing, so.
Mr. Presley?
Okay. Yeah, I just want everyone to understand, uh, I, I understand all them voices, and it's odd, I thought I'd only got a couple emails and I thought everybody was supportive of this coming in, uh, the people I've seen. Uh, whenever the news come out about Continental laying off six hundred people, I've seen excitement around the south end of Asheville and all of Buncombe County that they knew something was coming, they wasn't sure what it was. But I've been here sixty years, over sixty years. I grew up here when the American Inca plant, Sales Bleed Tree, uh, Gerber, we had jobs. Jobs create helping people be able to afford homes, childcare, where a parent can work, one can stay home. Our problem today here in Buncombe County is the parents have to have two jobs.
Sure do.
And it lets their kids get out. I understand there's a lot of things that, with every business, every manufacturing, but this right here is something that I am looking forward to, and it's just right in my backyard, so, I mean, uh, if anybody should complain about it, it should be me because there's just a river between us. And I appreciate y'all coming in. Brownie, what you said, the letter you wrote back, I think kicked every bit of this off to give everybody ease to say how important this is, and I appreciate you doing that.
Right.
And working with you and Al for the last eight, ten months, I've enjoyed it. We've seen a lot of things, gonna have it, gonna lose it, gonna have it, so, I'm excited about this, and I hope everyone else understands why we need this so bad, and there's a lot more land there that we can do a lot of things in the future.
Right.
To give every family the opportunity to have a lifestyle without living in poverty. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, I believe everyone's had a chance to comment. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, thank you again to all the county staff, uh, the county manager, Tim Love from Economic Development. Thanks to all of you and many others who were supporting them in their efforts. Projects like this are, to say they're complicated is a, is a huge understatement, and a lot of people from the county, in the chamber, Economic Development Coalition, Pratt and Whitney, Biltmore Farms, uh, AB Tech, uh, and so many others, there's too many to list, but I just want to, uh, express everyone's thanks for the, um, the due diligence on this that everyone had to do, uh, and sticking with this through an incredibly challenging year to figure out if this could be a fit. And so, um, congratulations to everyone who's worked on this, we appreciate it so much, and we look forward to, uh, to working with all of you as it goes into an implementation phase. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break before we go on to our next public hearing. All right, Commissioners, thank you. Let's call this meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on consideration of a family and parental leave policy, and Sharon Burke, our HR director, will help get us started. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All righty. So at the last meeting, you guys had asked me to come back with some additional information, and so, um, I did some research, and what I did find was that, um, nine states and, um, the District of Columbia, um, Washington DC, they have, um, a family medical leave, enhanced paid family medical leave program, um, and that's what I think you all saw when you went on the internet. The, the difference between what, um, Mecklenburg has, um, and what these other states in DC have is that they are state-funded through their legislation, and so the funding actually comes from, um, payroll deductions or the employers actually having an insurance policy. All right, so that's, that's the difference between what we're talking about. Ah, sorry about that. There we go. Um, now, one of the other things I found was that when we're looking at the percentage of compensation for those programs in those, um, other states, is that they ranged between sixty percent and ninety-five percent, and of those, um, the, the states in the DC, um, only one of them paid at a hundred percent. So tonight, a decision is needed, hopefully, and what we're looking at is, um, what type of leave would you like, uh, like to offer? Is it parental and family care? What is the benefit duration? What's the rate of compensation? And is it the same benefit for both married employees? So last week, or two weeks ago, um, the recommendation that, um, county management is asking for is to offer both paid family care and parental care. We're asking that we authorize eight weeks for parental and then six weeks for family care. We're asking for a hundred percent of compensation, and we're asking that we enhance the family medical leave, um, portion of the combined leave, um, provision, which would allow both couples, or not both couples, both employees, if they are married, um, to have equal benefits. So, gosh, when you look at it here, it doesn't look so hot, but, um, so this is what the policy changes would be, and every place that you'll see a yellow highlight, those are areas that, um, depending on what you choose and what you approve or don't approve, um, those would be the changes to the policy. So we're looking for eligible, I'm sorry, eligible for parental and family leave, and then when we go down to section two under paid benefit leave, we'd be looking at either a hundred percent for parental, a hundred percent for family care, eight weeks for parental, six weeks for family leave. The important piece here is in the ordinance, um, there is actually, um, where it talks about the FMA combined leave provision, um, specifically just for the parental leave, um, we're asking to have that removed in its entirety. Questions?
The question I have is, I think the policy's great, but I think it should be eight and eight, because I don't think it's right for people... Because I don't think it's right for people like, well, not my age, if they're my age, it won't be working. But old employees whose kids, you know, they won't have need for parental leave, you know, let's face it. But they will for family leave. And that's why I think it would be good to do eight and eight.
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to be willing to support anything higher than what your recommendation is. I mean, we need to do a public hearing, open all that up. And I think it's a great recommendation, and I'll just challenge the board to make sure that you measure it, you know, that you, a year from today, or whatever period of time it is, that you just measure it, make sure it's effective, being used properly, you know, that it's a real benefit, that it's meeting the need and not too expensive. Because, you know, the last thing you want to do, it's a whole lot easier to move up. But I'll tell you, if you give too much right now, and you go try to take it back later, that's not going to work. So, you know, I would, you know, just suggest that we come in at a reasonable benefit and then measure it and see how it's, see how it's working.
I think one way to control that, though, is you can do it a year at a time.
Well, I think you have to do it a year. I think you've got to measure it annually.
Yeah, well, if you do it a year at a time, that gives us time to evaluate it. And if we see that eight weeks is too much, we can lower it.
Can I just ask one process question on that? I agree, it can be politically hard to roll it back, even if you legally can. It's hard to take benefits away once they're established. But just from a purely kind of legal standpoint, we could adjust those terms in the future if we wanted to.
Yes.
It doesn't create any vested rights, I guess is what I'm asking.
No, it doesn't.
So we could, we have complete flexibility in terms of adjusting the terms in the future, one way or the other. Is that right?
It's not a vested right, is it?
These kind of benefits in the personnel ordinance aren't tied to a length of service. So it's just strictly a benefit being offered, so there wouldn't be a vested right.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're going to debate all these questions a bit more. Why don't we go ahead and have the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back and we'll debate. I think we're going to approve a policy. It sounds like we're just going to talk about what kind of policy. So I think we've got some folks who want to participate in the public hearing. I'll call the hearing at 8:59. And our folks, we're ready to listen to the folks who have patiently waited for their chance to share their perspective.
I live in Asheville, and I'm the Executive Director of Just Economics. I want to first thank you for considering this policy and for the thoughtful discussion you all have had around this topic over the last several months. Just Economics has worked with coalition partners in advocating support for this policy. My hope is that you will pass the policy this evening. As you may know, it is a shameful fact that the US is the only industrialized nation in the world without some sort of federally mandated parental leave policy after the birth or adoption of a child. I applaud you for your efforts to do better for Buncombe County employees and model family-friendly workplace policies. I hope you will consider 10 weeks of paid parental leave, as research shows that at least 10 weeks of parental leave reduces infant mortality, and this aligns with Buncombe County's Community Health Improvement Plan goal of infant mortality prevention. Additionally, I thank you for including care for seriously ill family members in your policy as an opportunity to practice equity and demonstrate care and compassion for your staff during difficult times. I appreciate how you have been balancing care for your employees with being good stewards of our tax dollars. I believe family-friendly workplace policies, like the one you are pursuing tonight, are not only good for the employees and their families, but are also a solid investment in a qualified and productive workforce. Anyone who has had to return to work while their spouse is in the hospital or while their parent has been incapacitated can tell you that they are not being fully present and productive on the job. And any parent who has used all of their sick and vacation time after the new child has come into their family can tell you that they worry about having to take unpaid leave for any other time that they might be sick or their child is sick throughout the rest of the year, and this negatively impacts their work performance. A paid family leave policy is both carried and practical. It is good for Buncombe County. I want to thank you again for your meaningful conversation, and I hope you'll move this policy forward tonight. Thank you.
We are getting the next caller on the line.
Good evening. My name is Tina Sherman, and I'm Campaign Director at MomsRising.org. MomsRising is a grassroots organization of more than a million members nationwide and nearly 41,000 members here in North Carolina. We are moms, dads, aunts, uncles, grandparents, and more, who are committed to building a more family-friendly nation where both families and businesses can thrive. On behalf of MomsRising and our more than 2,100 members in Buncombe County, I want to express my deep gratitude that you're considering a family and parental leave policy. According to a recent study conducted by the Center for Child and Family Policy at Duke University, only 12% of North Carolina workers have access to paid leave. This means that when a family member falls ill, many North Carolina workers end up cobbling together vacation time and sick days and then crossing their fingers nothing goes wrong. This creates significant hardships for families and financial shortfalls at a time when families need it most. The lack of paid leave means that one in four moms return to work within 10 days of giving birth, and one in five retirees leave the workforce earlier than planned to care for an ill spouse or other family member. MomsRising member Samantha from Candler Shares, "Paid leave for caregivers is essential. It's well past time to make this happen. Thank you for doing the right thing, Buncombe County." And Tamika from Mills River adds, "This has a huge impact on many families' livelihoods and many people that I have managed, including myself, and have had to make decisions that are unbearable because of not having paid leave. Please make this happen." Research tells us that when workers have access to job-protected paid leave, they are more likely to remain in the workforce while providing care for an ill family member and likely to show increased levels of productivity. But paid leave is not just good for families, it is also significant for employers. Studies of paid leave programs in other states tell us that 90% of businesses showed an increase in productivity and employee morale, and 87% showed no increase in costs. I think Lori from Asheville sums it up well. Paid leave is critical to the health of our communities and public employees, now more now during the pandemic than ever. Offering paid family, offering family and parental leave is a win-win-win for families, taxpayers, and the county, who are so grateful for Buncombe County's leadership and supporting our civil servants. I know you will all agree that whether it's time to care for a newborn, a newborn you swear already smiles, a mom who is ill, or a spouse battling cancer, being there for family is what matters. You shouldn't have to give up a paycheck to do it. Thank you.
We're just double-checking to make sure that we were not able to reach our other two people signed up for public comment. One moment. Standby for public comment.
Hi, Buncombe County Commissioners, this is Rebecca Chaplin with AARP North Carolina. I live in Barnardsville in Buncombe County, and I'm glad to be here to speak for a few moments about the proposed paid family leave expansion. And specifically, I'm glad to be here to represent the people who are 50-plus. I know when we think about this paid leave family expansion, many people think about families and children, which is, of course, very relevant. And when I think about it, I think about both the employees and the care recipients who are 50-plus. We know there's a lot of them, because one day we'll all either be a caregiver or a care recipient for a parent or a spouse. And by better supporting these family caregivers, we can help to minimize nursing home placement and prevent unnecessary and costly hospitalizations. We can support these family caregivers in pretty easy, common-sense ways, and one of those is flexibility at work. So I know that there is concern about misuse and abuse of paid family leave, but experience has shown, and evidence from other states, that misuse and abuse is not generally what happens. In fact, what does happen is increased loyalty and a sense of appreciation by employees who are granted a little bit of extra support. The proposal to expand the paid family leave being put forward by Buncombe County is also in alignment with their status as an age-friendly community. And it reflects a commitment to empowering residents to age in place and the aging community. So I support Buncombe County in doing this, because AARP stands behind family caregivers and supports the proposed family leave expansion. And we believe that Buncombe County can be an example across the state and across the nation, and we would love to support that. So if you have any questions, of course, you are all welcome to contact me with AARP North Carolina, and I think you all already have my contact information. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know it's late. I hope you all have a good night.
That concludes our public comment.
All right. Thank you. We will conclude the public hearing at 9:08 PM.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make the motion to go with the staff recommendation of eight weeks for parental care, six weeks for family care at 100% compensation, with the enhancement of the FMLA regulation that will allow the same benefit to our married couples.
I'd like to second that, but also I'd just like to think that the recommendation six and eight is good, because I think we've got to start somewhere, because I'd rather not take away from them and measure this for a year or two, see what it's like. We've been talking about this for months. I think this commission needs to make a decision tonight on this. And, you know, I don't want the employees to get anything, oh, we've got great employees here. And doing six-eight probably ain't what it needs to be, but I think it's a good starting point. It's like the insurance that they had years ago. You know, whenever we started messing, wanting to take away insurance from them, that was one of the biggest conversations going on around here. So that's why I will support this motion for the six-eight and evaluate it over the next couple of years, year or two years, and then we go from there.
All right, there's a motion and a second.
I have a question for Ms. Burke. Can the leave be stacked? So for example, if a parent takes the parental leave and their newborn infant isn't well, can they then use the additional six weeks of paid family leave to be, to care for the infant who may have a medical condition? I know that's like far-reaching, but I'm just thinking about that.
Great question, though. I think the way it's written right now, they would be able to stack.
Yeah.
I also was just asked by Legal to, one of the other pieces in the consideration is we need to make sure that you vote on the removal of the combined leave provision. Specifically, we have to strike what's in the ordinance currently.
So does that need to be put in the motion?
Can I ask for the maker of the motion if they would like to incorporate that into their motion?
Absolutely.
And the gentleman who seconded, are you comfortable with that as the motion? Okay. All right, so that is part of the motion as made.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak on the motion?
I mean, I'm willing to, we've talked about it a long time, I'm willing to get it started. I'm willing to support the motion tonight.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion?
Yeah, I'm in the same place. I've been vocal all along that I'd like to see us get to some higher numbers on this, but I think the important thing is starting it, and we've been talking about it for a long time. So I would support the motion as made with, as long as there's this commitment to evaluate it and to really take a good, close look at the data in a year.
Any other comments on the motion?
I'll support it, but I'd still rather see it at eight and eight. But I want to see employees get something. But I agree, in a year, I'll be coming back.
All right. I'll support the motion as well. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And I think it's, we've talked about it several times, but it's an important, this is an important benefit and fairly significant. So I think it warrants, warrants all the time that we've spent on it. I also certainly support the idea, this is a new policy for us, so I would like to have a really rigorous review of how it's working, you know, around maybe, you know, that could report back to us in a year, you know, start. You know, my personal, I think it's going to be a great benefit, certainly for the, you know, the parental leave, I think is just, we should have, we should have done this probably a long time ago. And then the family medical leave part is a great benefit, too. You know, we've all had family members who have, you know, who get diagnoses that are scary and are emergencies, and we want people to be able to focus on caring for people during those critical times. I do, you know, I do think the fact that we are doing something that's different than what most companies and organizations do, which is to provide paid leave but not at 100% compensation, we do need to kind of, we need to track this, to see how this affects us, because it does, you know, I think we need to see that this does create a powerful incentive for people to utilize this benefit, right? Because they are going to get paid just as much money.
That's right.
Not working for Buncombe County as they do when they're working for Buncombe County. And the definitions of what a serious health concern is, people keep talking about, like when people get cancer, we need to be taken care of in the hospital. Nobody disagrees with that. Everybody agrees with that. This doesn't just say when people are battling cancer. This talks about serious health concerns. There's a broad range of views out there in the world about what a serious health concern is. And I think the staff have worked hard to build in some protocols to, so that it is the policy serving the intent that I think we want, which is that they are really, you know, very serious health concerns. This is not for routine kinds of health concerns. But I do worry that there might be efforts to try to use them for things that are outside the intent of the policy. So I think we just, that's where the review process comes in. We see how much it's utilized. We see if there's a lot of, you know, differences of opinion in the organization between folks who want to utilize it and the folks they report to, or if, or if the concerns I'm sharing right now hopefully turn out to be, you know, not very common at all. But I think those are all part of what we need to look at. I personally would, if, would support a longer period of time if we weren't doing it at 100%, because in that way, I think the interest of the employees and the organization are a bit more aligned, where we are supporting them financially, but they're giving a little bit too. And so in some ways, the, there's an incentive there not to use it, you know, except when it's really needed. So that's just kind of my personal take on it, but I'm happy to support the motion. So any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, I'll make a few. I think it's really important that as, and I know y'all are probably tired of hearing me talk about our strategic plan, but I think it is so important that we keep those goals at the forefront, not only for our community, but for our own workforce within Buncombe County government. And if we truly are going to address the multiple resolutions that we've put forward, including systemic racism as a public health crisis with infant mortality and health equity, then we do need to be looking at these particular types of leave for our own employees. We know that in many cases, women of color are the key breadwinners within their families. And I feel like as Buncombe County, we should not force And I feel like as Buncombe County, we should not force our, our breadwinners into making a decision between a paycheck and having a child or caring for an ill family member. I think it all contributes to our ways of starting to dismantle some systemic racism issues. Like this is just one small thing that I think we can do. I think we're also providing equity for fathers who have never really been given that opportunity to have paid leave to care for their new, their newborn, their newly adopted child. And I said earlier that I think it's important that Buncombe County lead the way in a lot of things. And as, was talking about salaries increasing and that new companies coming in are going to force others to step up to the plate with salaries. I think we can lead the way as Buncombe County government in terms of being a family-friendly employer and others will follow suit. So that Buncombe County as a whole is known for being a place that supports parents, supports children who are caregiving for their elderly parents as we know our community is aging. So I think we have a lot of opportunity to really lead the way and be innovative in terms of how we do this. And others hopefully will look to us as the leaders.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also wanted just to show you the definition of what we're using for a serious health condition. So it's very specific.
Oh, okay. So a condition that requires inpatient care at a hospital, hospice, or residential medical facility care, including any period of incapacity or any subsequent treatment in connection with such inpatient care or a condition that requires continuing care by a licensed healthcare provider. Thank you for sharing that. I mean, again, I guess my response to that is that that is actually quite broad. I think there's a lot of different things that could fit into the language of that. But again, this is new and we'll, we'll learn as we go. So thank you for sharing it.
You're welcome.
All in favor of the motion, Mr. Pender?
The thing is, some of the research that I had done, is I understand your concerns, but when it's out there, a lot of the companies are saying that doesn't really happen. So I know that is broad, but I do know some of the research I looked at, same concern you had about somebody abusing it, they just aren't seeing that. So let's just, let's, let's give it a chance and see. And as long as you come back and if, and if it does, you can, if it looks like it's been abused, you roll it back. But I just think let's, we got to start somewhere. So this is a good starting point. Staff did a lot of legwork on this, so let's, let's start here and just keep evaluating it. Just keep evaluating. Because I really want people to look and say, what does Buncombe County do?
Yeah.
Not us looking at other counties, say, well, what does somebody else know? Let's let people look and say, well, that's what they do in Buncombe County. So let's set the example and go from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, we've got one more item. Ms. Pender, do you have anything to report on?
I have a really long list, so.
Thought you would.
I have an hour of the Buncombe County matter comment.
Put it in an email. All right. We don't have any old business items.
We've got a board appointment.
We've got one new business item, too. We've got a resolution approving the public transportation agency safety plan. And Matt Cable will present this.
So you know what? This meeting is going so long, I'm just going to quit tonight. This is it. I'm done. I'm done with this. I'm out, okay? Just, I just want y'all to know that, so you know.
Well, good evening again. I'm going to be brief and then I'm going to turn it over to William, who will also be brief, because I know you've been in a long marathon meeting tonight. But the item before you is a resolution approving a public transportation agency safety plan for Mountain Mobility. William High, who's transportation planner within the department, he really works closely with compliance monitoring and with implementing our plans, particularly surrounding safety. And I'm going to hand it over to him because he's actually shepherded this plan through the process to get it to, before you tonight.
Good evening and thank you. As Matt said, I will be brief. So this is our public transportation agency safety plan, which is a federally mandated safety plan. This started, this process started about two years ago when the FTA put this rule into place and the ball really got stolen, started rolling about a year ago. Initially, we were supposed to have this done in July, but with COVID, FTA pushed the deadline back. Regardless, we are required to have this public trans, this PTASP, as it's called, in place by the end of the year. Just briefly, our timeline for Mountain Mobility has been that we were provided a sample of the plan by North Carolina Department of Transportation's Integrated Mobility Division in March and we began working on that in the spring. We submitted it to IMD over the summer, who made some small edits to the plan and gave it back to us. We then had our Community Transportation Advisory Board review and approve of the plan and now we are presenting it to you for review and approval. The primary, let me just pause for just a quick moment to say that North Carolina already has a robust system safety plan in place that all transit systems in the state are required to follow. So we already have something like this already in place and this is at federal level. The two elements that this really creates that are new are our system, our safety management system, which in shorthand is a method for us to track existing metrics in a more comprehensive and straightforward way. I mean, comprehensive insofar as everyone statewide will probably be using the same metrics as we move forward. And it creates performance-based targets for us to track as well. So here are the sample, or here are our proposed safety performance targets for Mountain Mobility. There is nothing radical here. These are both aspirational as well as attainable. These are largely what we are already doing. And so there is, these are based both how we have performed over the last, I believe, four fiscal years. And, yes, so, so the potential impacts of it are that really, there's not that many. They support, it supports our existing system as it is. And the main priority is that we need to track it, again, in this sort of systematic way for the state and the FTA. These are elements that we are already tracking and have been for several years. For some other systems, this might be a bit of a heavier lift, but for us, this is already in place. So with that, we are just requesting the adoption by the board of the resolution for the PTASP.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution for the PTASP.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was easy.
All right, board appointments. So we have an appointment to the Air Quality Agency. We had two applicants apply. Let me just start over on Amanda's side and if, we'll just go down the table and if folks would just identify which of the two candidates you prefer, we'll add it up.
Great. I am taking the recommendation of the Regional Air Quality Director and recommending Mr. Wisniewicz.
Ditto, same.
Gary Wisniewicz.
Yeah.
Ned Gutman.
Gary Wisniewicz.
Gary.
Gary Wisniewicz.
All right, great, got it. I've got a couple of announcements. On November 19th at 4:30 PM, the county commissioners will be attending a special meeting of the Advanced Monument Task Force, which will be held virtually. December 7th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326. And then that day at 5:00 PM, December 7th, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And then on December 10th at 12:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a budget retreat at AB Tech Woodfin, 24 Canoe Lane, Asheville, North Carolina 28804. Is there a need for a closed session? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.